Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize if we kept you waiting in the hallway. We had an executive session prior to this meeting, which was specifically called to deal with school security issues. It's an executive session, so we can't tell you what went on. It's school security, so I'm especially not going to tell you what we talked about. I will only say that you should, as a public, be proud of our town, who has made a commitment to ensure the safety of our students. And we have a police force led by our chief of police, who is actually trained in this kind of matter and has been a very valuable resource. Our school's safety unit has been helpful, in fact, all of our first responders. So your Board of Education continue to be, I'll say, on top of this to make sure that we are doing everything humanly possible to ensure the safety of your students in this town. So I thank you for having patience with us while we were a few minutes late. Having said that, on to our student reports. Why don't we just go down the line and Ms. Baker?
So last Wednesday, we participated in the National Walkout, where over 700 Ludlow students walked out of school and student speakers were able to voice their feelings. And to follow that, this Saturday, a bus of AP US Gov. students and a bus of AP comparative government students are going down to DC for the March For Our Lives. A few weekends ago, we had Project Runway, which is one of the biggest PTA fundraisers, where seniors model fashions from local stores. It was a lot of fun. This weekend, spring sports have started up. And this Wednesday, juniors will be taking the SAT, hopefully, if there's no snow. We also have the Townwide Orchestra Festival coming up, where combined orchestras from all the schools perform. And the high schoolers have worked with the guest conductor, Robert Gardner. And also with the music department. The music department leaves for Disney World this Thursday, where each ensemble gets to perform in the park and attend a workshop in a Disney recording studio, which is cool. And lastly, a concern has quickly arisen among my peers after these endless snow days of a possible very late graduation. And I've heard a lot of concerns from camp counselors, who are worried that they're going to have to leave for work either the day after graduation or even before graduation and come back to graduate. And also some students who have open houses or orientations at college that week. And so from me and many of my peers, we ask you that you please can consider an earlier graduation date.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our representative from Ludlow? Mr. Peterson?
Hi. If I'm not mistaken, the Townwood Orchestra Festival was last Thursday.
Okay, yes.
And it was awesome, for the record.
All right. So for Ward, I'm going to start off with our sports update. And the first one's actually the co-op ski team, Ludlow and Ward. The girls have won state champs, first place, for the sixth year in a row, which is outstanding. And the boys actually did the best they've done since 2013. They got second place this year. Our hockey team, again, co-op, made states. And basketball also made states and was in FCX. The boys and girls' basketball beat Ludlow, which was a big night. And JR will mention our Coaches vs. Cancer event. Also, last Wednesday, we hosted a walkout. We had 500 to 600 people, it's kind of hard to count when there's that many, attend the walkout. We had a song everybody sang, "Imagine" by John Lennon. Somebody read a poem during the advisory period that we held after that, where people got to kind of discuss gun violence and school safety. Yeah, and then by one of the students, who actually, the poem was written by one of the students who passed away in Parkland. And then we also, during the walkout, for anybody who didn't want to partake in the walkout, we had what we called the postcard campaign in our library, where we wrote letters to students and teachers of Parkland. Let's see. Also, we've had a bunch of Fairfield U students come into our health classes, which have been really cool, because we've got to hear real stories about college students and stuff. And coming from a senior, I was kind of expecting it to be kind of stale, but their stories were incredibly vivid and just very detailed. We got to ask them questions. They just talked to us like it was normal. So that was a really cool experience. Two Fridays ago, we hosted our no-phone free day. So essentially, we left our phones at home, left them in the car, put them in our lockers for the whole day. We had a bunch of great activities. We had Uno going on. Some teachers hosted like kind of a free draw session. So if you had free periods, instead of looking down at your phone, you went and engaged with people. And then lastly, our Ward Achievement Gap Task Force presented in San Diego just a few weeks ago. A great presentation of teachers and students. And coming up soon, they're presenting in Southern Connecticut State University.
All right. Among other things, we hosted both the American Math Competition Test and National Latin Exam at Ward. And the Ward Business Class came in second in the Connecticut Challenge in Junior Achievement against a few other schools. We had the Unified Sports Basketball Game last Monday. And as Ted mentioned, we had our Coaches vs. Cancer game.
Raised over $2,000.
Raised over $2,000, yeah. And hopefully, we will be having SATs on Wednesday.
Questions for our representatives from Ward? Mrs. Maxon, Connolly?
I don't know if you can speak to this regarding the Achievement Gap Task Force, but do you know of, beyond engaging in the discussion, do you know what kind of ideas they're trying to bring back to the school? Or, you know, what their work is meaning for Ward? I don't know if you can speak to that at all.
Yeah, so I'm not personally on the Achievement Gap Task Force, but one of my teachers is, who kind of spoke to me about their goals and stuff. And it's definitely trying to kind of dwindle the gap between high-achieving students and lower-achieving students. But outside of that, I'm not 100% sure, but I can get back to you next meeting about that, definitely.
Just do. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sometime in April, we vote on the graduation date, so make sure that you show up and talk about your concerns again. Having no other questions, on to the presentations. As the board knows, we schedule curriculum updates a couple of years after we adopt a new curriculum. And so the two that are being made tonight are technology and library media. I presume technology is first. So Mr. Cummings, you want to start the ball rolling?
I will. We do have, Mike Cummings, Chief Academic Officer. We do have two presentations tonight. The first will be led by Mr. John McCandless, who is the Curriculum Liaison for the Tech Ed Department. And then we will follow that with the Library Media Presentation from Ms. Callahan and Ms. Fiala, and Ms. Carrera will be part of that as well. So we'll invite John up and we'll turn on the projector and get going.
So again, my name is John McCandless. I'm Liaison of the Technology Education Department here at Fairfield Public Schools. I brought quite a show of force of my department here, and they're all very eager to help me present up here.
We've, excuse me, sir, you're going to have to use the mic, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, then. You guys are killing me. Bring it in. I have to share it a little bit. So our goal today is to show success of the updated curriculum through our new course offerings, instruction, implementation, and the outcomes. Show the support of our learning and the future direction for technology education through the district itself. So technology education is the study of human innovation. Technology education provides an opportunity for students to apply and manage knowledge and resources related to the human-made world.
So I'm Chris Samuelson. I was the Technology Education Liaison from 2007 up until it was taken over. Anyway, so I was doing that for about nine or 10 years. And so I was part of this process to go through revision the first time that we had adopted a new format curriculum. And so, as you know, with technology, it rapidly moves. And so we needed to update our curriculum in a way that would really meet the needs of our kids, the students we serve, and to meet the needs of all. And that meant for the whole range of students. So we have students we serve from special needs all the way up through AP. And we have a diverse program, both high-tech and some of you might consider more on the traditional realm. So we went through and looked at various standards that were available through the state and through other states. And we adopted standards that would help move us and propel us forward to that next generation, that next level. So as we updated our technology, now we are going to have a groundwork, a framework underneath, a foundation that was strong, that could support all of those new things that were happening in our program. So middle school is going to start?
So my name's Eric Clauvy. I teach at Fairfield Woods Middle School. And with me, I have-
Catherine Ardette, teaching at Tomlinson Middle School.
And basically, our goal is to just basically describe how in Fairfield, how middle school is kind of taking the idea of 21st century skills, where we are now, and where we plan to move towards in the future. And so the first question that we always have is, what is tech ed to the Fairfield 7th grader? A big issue that I always run into my classes on day one with my 7th grade is basically, what is tech ed? And essentially, a lot of the students are thinking that it's a computers Level 2 course, when we try to tell them that technology is not necessarily what we're relying on in the class, but it's a tool to assist them. And so it's one of the great questions and kind of hurdles we try to overcome within just the first week of our class before we actually get a chance to do anything. Some of the mindsets and things that we practice over all of the middle schools are things like practice design and problem-solving abilities, study techniques to manipulate materials and tools, and ultimately, provide exposure to a wide range of opportunities in a society where technology changes on a week-to-week basis. So doing presentations like this, where we're hoping to update our curriculum over a couple of years, can be immensely challenging when, within weeks, things are constantly updating. The question is, how do we accomplish this? In middle school, our ultimate goal is to take things like 21st century skills and apply them in STEM-based activities. And the reason why this creates success is because 21st century skills ultimately allow students to develop skills and techniques that make them successful in life. But with STEM-based activities, they can still learn and integrate a lot of the great tools and resources that our academic teachers are teaching on a day-to-day basis in their class. Things like 3D modeling and printing, while also using geometry and measurement, mixed together in one class, shows us that tech ed is a supplemental resource to go along with our academic classes to further boost our kind of school environment as a whole. Some of the classes and things that we're doing in the classrooms as of now, which even a few people over here, like Mr. Rivera, have been in my classes with me, are transportation techni-, excuse me, transportation technology, studying things like aerospace engineering and getting a chance to look at aerodynamics, especially in a world like Elon Musk can show us that a passion and a hobby can really move society as a whole. Communication technology, where students get an opportunity to kind of showcase and articulate themselves using advanced software, photo editing, 3D modeling, and getting a chance to kind of expose some of their creativity. Manufacturing technology, where students are learning traditional skills, but applying them in new ways in order to make and create new things. And what Catherine's going to speak on is maybe some of the new 21st century skills that we're pushing towards.
Thank you, Eric. To teach 21st century skills, we have adapted as technology has developed. And as you can see on the board there, through projects like robotics, where these students are programming the little cricket car to draw patterns. It can do other things as well. And other projects like designing and making 3D projects. Here, pencil holders. In the next project, designing phone stands, where they have to size them and make them to fit the phones. And if I just hold up here, here's from one of the students from the first marking period, a little bicycle that he designed from scratch, to give you an idea of the type of challenges that they're facing and what they're doing. Also, if I look at the next, you can see students here working on a stop-motion animation project. At the present time, many of these projects that we're developing were funding through grant writing ourselves. This is how we're funding them. And our plan is to plant the seeds for collaborative 21st century thinking and collaborative skills that these students will need. At middle school level, we're, as I said, we're primarily funded through grant writing for these projects. But we try to unify what we're doing, and we're planning to link the projects in middle school with what's being developed at the high school level. I'll hand you over to the high school now. Thank you.
So for CTE, the Career Technology Education is an avenue for students of core classes to implement theory and knowledge into application practices and gain deeper understanding. I mean, this is sort of a fancy way of saying they're able to take what they do in their core classes and apply them through areas like engineering, graphic design, CAD, transportation technology, wood technology, and apply them in real-world ways. And in a lot of ways, find careers or avenues that they'd like to go through once they get past high school.
So in wood technology, the students will learn a bunch of various, you know, skills and things like how to use the tools safely, which is very important. We stress safety a lot. And they learn how to design their own plans, and they come up with their own designs, the measurements. We make them figure out exactly what pieces of wood they're going to need to make, the process that's involved in creating the objects that they make from scratch. Basically, we take rough sawn lumber from lumber mills, and we go through the whole process of how to turn that into a beautiful finished product that you can see up there. So there's problem solving, there's materials processing. They have to understand a little bit of science, how the tree rings actually come together and which orientation they're in. That affects the strength of the wood. If they don't orient the wood right, the project may break if you stress it. We're also working towards integrating some more technology in the class. We have a CNC router that we've bought through grant money, and we're working on integrating that into the curriculum. Chris, you might want to talk about, a little bit more about the digital integration. Luke's going to do that?
I'm Luke Allen. I'm the Wood Technology Teacher at Fairfield Ward High School. Going into the digital classroom integration, specifically, we're creating classrooms online to give kids access to both the content video, so both us doing the content, so the kids can actually access it at home, along with other lectures that we find integral to wood technologies and other manufacturing-oriented videos and/or class content. When it comes to internships and career awareness, we're trying to create pathways, or career pathways, for students who express interest in both manufacturing or material-based career constructions. Community involvement, some of the specific ones that Mark Robinson wanted me to bring up were school improvements. We are pretty integral in many facets of school when it comes to improving both the physical space and/or other spaces in the school that do need things made out of wood. We also have some charity auctions coming up, specifically at Ludlow. So if you see an advertisement for it, please come out and support.
TransTech, the students learn how to deal with various transportation technologies. They generally start off with basic concepts of transportation through the air, on land, over water. We do various projects like maybe model rockets or CO2 cars, things like that that you may be familiar with. As they progress, they learn small engines. They do repair work for people in the community, repairing their snow blowers or lawn mowers. And as they move up the chain and as they learn more skills and knowledge, they start to work on actual automobiles, diagnosing problems, repairing them, that sort of thing. Chris, can, you want to talk about the digital integration in that area?
So as Luke was saying, to integrate some of the connection points for the students on Google, so that we can provide for them further information and resource, so that they can delve into the experience in a deeper level at home, on their own time. Internships and work experiences, those are things we look to pursue in the future. We have so many auto dealers based in Fairfield. We have probably 10 major brands that are based here. It is a tremendous resource that we need to really investigate tapping into in a larger way and something that could support the students of a variety of levels. And in that way, involve the community also. Bring them also back in to help. Maybe part of that is the businesses that are involved out there. Also bring them in and help that, help us, help them, help them, help us. It's a combination. It's going both ways, so.
For those of you who don't know, CAD stands for computer-aided design. Sometimes it's computer-aided drafting. Sometimes it's computer-aided drafting and design. It has 2Ds. In our area, we focus a lot on problem solving, how to learn, how to use the tools and the software to create models. We have three different areas that we're going to go over in a second. So you can see a couple of different GIFs that we put in here of a, one of the, one of the top is a new 3D printer that we just got in, that we're playing around with. And one on the bottom is an example of CNC milling, which we're going to try to bring into the program in the future. So the architecture area, the students learn how to create dimensioned plans, how to create the actual 3D models, how to apply the materials. They learn a little bit about how the buildings are constructed. You can see there's an example of an architectural model there. I brought one with me too here, if anyone wants to take a look at it after. These are all professional-level programs that I'm talking about, too. These actual architects use these programs. You can go ahead and do the next one. So in the engineering class right now, we're, I have two different teams. This is the other team right here. They have different ideas in how they were going to, you know, achieve this. We're building hovercrafts. This one was a test to make sure that the lift and the thrust were both functional and that it could actually move. Right now, they're working on getting the steering set up so that they can actually control it, which they should be able to finish this week or next week. So the engineering section's all about coming, you know, we have a problem, how do we solve it? Let's come up with a design. Let's build it. Let's test it. If it doesn't work, then we've got to go back to the drawing board. And then in the animation area, we focus a lot on how to build the 3D models, how to, you know, create the movement using key framing or motion capture. We're just starting to get into, you can see on the bottom right there, how to take the animations we create and embed them in actual video to sort of create special effects. So it's a very complex program, and it takes a long time to learn. But we have some talented students that do some pretty cool stuff with it.
Hello, I'm Brian Casey. This is computer technology. It is a, we are focusing on computers from the basics to the more advanced things. In updating our curriculum, we've started to include Arduino's, which are microcontrollers to teach basic circuitry. We're moving away from the older plug-and-play circuits to using computers to actually teach the basics as well. It's a lot of problem solving and troubleshooting. And we've started to use Lynda.com for a flipped classroom. That's where students could learn at home. Lynda.com is a software that we pay for as a whole district, and it has just a ton of resources that have really adhered well to computer technology on its own. In the future, we're looking to create more of a digital classroom kind of aspect. We're looking to get into cybersecurity, which is really big coming up, and work in certification courses like the Network Plus and the A+. And those are certifications that you could get. And that's how you get a job at Geek Squad and things like that. So we're looking to improve those classes to really, you know, end with certification if students want to go there.
You can also see on the slide, the video here shows really advanced work with these microcomputers, Arduino's, and a Raspberry Pi in order to create an urban farming unit that we're working with. The students are applying for funding through the PTA and other grants to be able to design and create their own. So MIT actually made this project, but the students are going back and doing this all themselves now.
So in graphics, we are focusing on pre-production through, you know, the pre-production process through the actual making of the items. That's on both school projects and community-based projects. There's some examples up here of t-shirts we've made and just vinyl decals. So if you look around any of the high schools, you're going to see vinyl decals all over the place. Those are made in Ward Graphics Labs, or both of the graphics labs. Sorry. The advanced graphics class, we're looking to reinstate. It's been brought back from high demand of students that want to take these courses. And we're starting, we're implementing new Adobe softwares, which aren't traditionally even in our class. So we're starting to work with Adobe After Effects, which is web-based graphics. And we're starting to move into that realm of digital and web graphics, which is where most graphic design things are headed. We're also trying to increase or add AP or Early College Experience courses, which a few of our areas can all, can all get, and graphics is one of those that we see most easily becoming an AP course very soon. And then we have Engineering Robotics as a standalone class. It is a robotics class. And it focuses on mechanical systems, electronic systems, pneumatic systems, and again, problem solving. It's different than the CAD focus on engineering. It's a little bit more hands-on in that regard. And where we're trying to take this is, again, add more. Hopefully, this can become an AP or Early College Experience pathway in the future. Really trying to get into the programming of robots as well. I mean, that is a class that's taught, but it's kind of the next steps as you get into robotics. And we are trying to work out internships as well. Some students already go into those. We have a few slides next that show us how the standards kind of align. In our Engineering Robotics course, we use standards from many different subjects. So we have a computer-aided drafting standard. And you'll see how, this is the robotics class. Those are the pneumatic parts. But you're seeing 3D-printed items that have been drawn out and designed by the students being used in their robotics projects. And you see just a couple more examples of projects here that students have been learning the design process, and they are, you know, employing all those critical thinking skills and 21st century skills that we're really trying to get into all of our classes.
So 21st century tech. How do we gain or value success? How do we judge the success of the students? So we've, a couple of years ago, we decided to look at different models that we could use to measure success. And we really came down on the side of something called the Universal Systems Design Model. And we are able to employ this through all levels, middle school, all the way through high school. And it's a project success assessment of a loop of input, process, output, and feedback. Most of us have all heard those things before. But applied in a regular fashion across all of our classes. So all of our students utilize this to assess their own work so they can self-evaluate what's going on. And then they can say, hey, this is where I'm having an issue. We use also a significant number of project-based assessments. Obviously, we're a hands-on, real-world, applied area, as you can see. So projects are a key component of what we do. And as the kids, as the students acquire more and more skills, it's astounding to see the great success they have. Some of the testing that was going on for the Perkins Grant that has funded most of the technology advancement purchases for the last 12 or 13 years in the town. the technology advancement purchases for the last 12 or 13 years in the town. Those are measured tests that our students have done, I think, very well on. It depends on the year. Ward, as you can see, was in the auto, they were first in the state this last year. Ludlow was first in the state a year before that. So we are always in that top 10 realm usually with many of our programs. So just saying that students that go to college is the only measure of success, it is a great measure of success. You can see the schools up there, just one sidelight. Student that went to Syracuse a few years back and it was one of Rick Strid's students came back and said, wow, I'm in the, you know, freshman level, but I'm already do, I came in with junior-level skills in the CAD area for engineering. And so that is a statement that I can hold as the accomplishment of what we're doing. It's significant. We utilize advanced technology, advanced processes, but we not only serve those kids that are going to school, to an advanced degree, we also serve those that are not going to be pursuing a college career, they may be pursuing a certificate career in a, in a automotive. It might be electric, electrical work, it might be in a computer tech realm. Those are areas that we have a vast need for in our society. So I think we have really put ourselves in a great position to support many different areas students are pursuing.
So ways that we support learning at the state level, it's, it's grants at the federal level. It's also the Perkins Grant, which is split into the CTE departments, which fall under family consumer science, business, and technology education. This has really been just a huge boost to what we've been able to do. On the district level, which of course is, you know, the biggest boost for us, our budget and supplies, capital improvements have really just made all the difference. We've really, over the years, we've, we've really learned to be able to spend these funds to just give the students the most possible experience, creating the most sort of output and just these beautiful pieces. They may not look beautiful on the outside, but engineering-wise and with design, it really is. And at the department level, we've had a lot of professional development, skill acquisitions. We've been able to go places like New York City for training in things like CAD and Adobe After Effects and things like that. And it's also allowed us to do a lot of curriculum update. A lot of technology is always changing and so, or sorry, curriculum writing. And we're able to make, you know, small adjustments that allow us to keep up with the technology while still meeting the curricular base that we do on a daily basis. This is another one where school, community relationships, we've been in contact with a few groups in order to try and create a sort of school instructor, community business group. I don't know if this was Mark's thing.
Yes, Mark's thing. So he's been, one of our teachers is sick today, and he was, been in contact with the Greater Bridgeport Business Council and he's already met with them. And so we're in the process of moving forward to provide some new relationships between business and what we do in the CTE world.
And finally, with the infusion of STEM into state standards and curriculum, we're really able to put the T and the technology and engineering into the STEM new curriculum. We're evaluating how we already meet these requirements. We're trying to go further in depth and see how we can, you know, make small changes in day-to-day instruction that's actually going to help the students really meet those goals and really, you know, lead to that higher education and those higher thinking skills. I mean, our, our goal is to start going towards completing the computer technology or an engineering pathway. Computer technology, we spoke about the cybersecurity aspect and engineering pathway. There's really a lot of ECE courses, especially at areas like UConn where they have actual courses where you're required to also be taking the EC or AP Calc course to go along with it. So it's not just some class that we're able to pass.
Yeah, so we, we're looking to incorporate some pathways and out of those pathways will be a comprehensive way that a student can really create their own new beginning as they're moving into the real world. We have a great program. We really believe in what we do. We have fun. We love teaching what we do. And I want to tell you that it's great to serve the students of Fairfield and the parents that we can help their students, their kids move on. And so I want to say thank you for all your support. You provide us with many resources and we thank you for that.
We'll take some questions from the board and then we'll go on to the other presentation while some of us are making way back. Who has a question that they'd like to pick up? Ms. Pink.
I have a question, more a comment. Many years ago, before I was a teacher, I worked for a company that made Broadway scenery and we took our blueprints and into CAD, we made them come to life. And the company is in Milford, SMI, they're right off the highway, and I'm sure they would love interns because they're really big in automation.
Other questions or comments from board members? Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
First of all, I would say that, that I didn't even recognize that seventh grade work up there and my son was in seventh grade two years ago. So the speed you referenced change in the beginning, I just, that could be a whole different world from what he experienced. One thing I was curious about is, it usually is part of our update. It's always valuable for the board to know, what have you seen fit that needed to change from the curriculum we approved? I give the example that when we had approved the art curriculum, it was the 2D art, I think had been a year-long prerequisite to get into other courses and they found that that was an impediment to getting students into the upper-level art courses because they weren't willing to take the full year. And so it was, it was the course, it was, had been board-approved, but they on their own changed it to a half-year, if I think I'm characterizing this correctly, to, and it more quickly enabled students to access the higher-level courses. So I'm curious if, from the curriculum we approved, if you can speak to, have there been changes that you saw? I mean, clearly you need to change quickly, I mean, you referenced that in the beginning, but what is different? What, you know, what are some changes you've made?
So I'll go back. We have a very comprehensive, I'll call it scope and sequence, where one level has to be completed before you go to the next level. So within many of our areas, we have four-year progression throughout our classes. And that's in CAD, it's in computer tech, it's in, TransTech and Auto. As we look to seeing where we need to change, we know that there's going to be new classes that are going to need to come in, in STEM area, specifically in engineering, most likely. We know we may have to modify what courses we are currently offering to do that, to fit. We can't just build a bigger building. We can't just, we understand that. But to update also requires us to sometimes upgrade a, quite a bit of technology to go a different path if we're going to, shall we say, modify curriculum. Sometimes that requires a significant investment to do that.
Can you give me an example of, of anything that's happened in the last couple of years? Either at middle school or high school?
Yes, in the, well, in the graphic communication technology department, we used to have a heavy focus on offset presses and like physical layout and setup of presses. And now it's really moved strongly towards the digital end of printing, but also through these web graphics and things like that. So we've had to put a lot more focus into actual program usage and that's one example. Rick, do you want to talk to CAD?
Well, I can, I can follow up on that too. So it's required us to stay up to date with the most current computer software, computer hardware. And anytime we increase software, it requires a commensurate upgrade with hardware because the programs are not less active, they're, they're so much more in-depth and so they're, they need more RAM, need more CPU speed, all those other things. Those are kind of things we have to incorporate as we move forward and to update, as we update, sometimes in the technology realm, it's going to incorporate many facets, not just a textbook or a theory. We're doing the hands-on and real projects, therefore we have to be able to do an output and be successful, so we consider the student's success in that also. So the graphics is one realm. The computer tech is constantly upgrading.
Like Brian said, in computer tech, we're really moving away from those basic Mr. Circuit stuff that we've been doing for 30, 40 years and we're moving towards these computer-controlled circuits. We're trying to move that even down further in levels so that students really are picking up the necessary skills in the areas of computer engineering, computer programming, computer sciences, and being able to apply those much earlier, which will give them really a leap forward in their later years. And they're able to complete projects like these robotic farms because they're learning how circuits and computers work together, not just how a computer system works and how it processes data, but also how they're able to control things around them.
As we updated the curriculum in 2012, we also made sure we were process-oriented, not project-oriented. So being process-oriented allowed us greater latitude as far as what projects we're able to pursue. And as technologies emerge and change, we pretty much have a more open platform that we allow to bring in new technologies, a lot, in a easier integration, I'll say, than if we were to be really fixed on a project. A project is going to change, the products are outcomes, so we're looking at the process and that's why we've even integrated the USM evaluation model for the kids. So it's all about the four steps, you know? We're looking at the input, we're looking at the output, we're looking at the feedback. What's the loop looking like? And that is more of the realm of engineer, it's the realm of a construction worker, it's the realm of a mechanic. It's all related in that I have the inputs, I have my process, I have my outputs, I have my feedback, I need to know what's going on. And so we're trying to create students who are well-versed in problem solving. That's our first and foremost. I don't care what class you take, you're going to see problem solving, top to bottom, and at any level. And so students that are special needs, they're going to be problem-solving at their level. The kids that's AP, we're going to give them the higher challenge, absolutely. We're going to make a much more comprehensive, shall we say, problem for them perhaps. We're going to challenge them.
And so that loop is consistent across all teachers in all of those sub-departments across all five of those schools, all six of those schools? Okay, thank you. And I was curious about, you know, you made reference to AP and thinking about adding something like that. And I was just curious with regard to the idea of adding anything AP, is that, and I ask this in ignorance, is that necessarily the best direction to go for students to demonstrate excellence, capacity, or ability to whomever professionally or educationally would be interested? I mean, of course, I love the idea of AP courses. On the other hand, you know, those are driven by a test for which they are preparing and I don't, I'm, I'm not sure, I don't necessarily, I wonder in this department, is that necessarily the best, most productive way to go with the students?
It's a great question. It's one we really talk about a lot. The problem in Connecticut is that AP is not offered so much in areas of, of tech ed, so we have to focus more on early college experience courses, which tend to be a little more curriculum-driven, at least in our areas. But also, we're putting these sort of at the end of pathways where students can go through and make a decision at the end if they're going to split off and stay in the realm of production and design, or if they really want to go towards that sort of motion graphic and advertising and really almost into the, into the business area a little bit. And there's, you know, they're trying to hone in on what they want to do when they go to college. So it, it really, it opens doors rather than tries to cut students off. It gives them more opportunity in specialized areas.
And, and so that serves them better in terms of being able to demonstrate their credentials?
A certain group of students, yes, it does.
Okay. And I was wondering, to what degree, and I don't know if this is practical, but is there any degree that this is able to integrate with their core classes? You know, if there are certain courses you know that they are taking, is that there at all? I suppose it could be difficult because, you know, you could have a senior taking CAD 10, I'm making this stuff up, a senior taking CAD 10 or whatever. So it might not be easy to do, but is that happening?
It is happening and I'd say there's a cross-pollination of learning that goes on. So I had a student in Wood 10 and she was in AP, she's in five AP classes as a senior. Now, this girl went to Brown, but I still remember Jen, and Jen Cardona, and that's, she's a wonderful student. She had my Wood 10 class as a second semester senior and we were talking about ellipses and using a string and she says, I just learned that in physics on the theory of doing this. We apply things in need as, as, as is needed at whatever level within our classes. So I'm going to say, we utilize whatever we can, math, reading, technology, technological literacy, whatever it is, the concepts of measuring in all different ways, you know, teaching a student in ninth grade how to measure to the 10,000th of an inch versus a, a senior, it's, it's all the same. It's, it's applying students how to accurately do things and at the level they're at. And we're trying to get them to connect all the dots and we're a great place where we connect dots.
That Geneva Wheel project, the one with the little crank on it, that actually requires trigonometric equations to design those. So I give them a sheet and they have to fill in the numbers, they have to calculate all the distances. It's basically two triangles and a bunch of trigonometric equations to do something like that. You choose the number of slots you want. It could be eight slots, it could be 12 slots, that one has four. And they have to figure out what the numbers are, design it in the program, and then we run a simulation to see if it actually crashes or if it can, it can move freely. I've also, years ago, I was able to do a, a project with the AP Bio Kids cell function animations. They used to do them with clay and just do stop-motion animation. We teamed up with my computer animation students and we did animations with the Bio Kids on the different functions of cells. But that sort of thing is really difficult just because of the schedules and the time involved. But we love to do stuff like that whenever we can.
Okay. Sorry.
I've had, all of my students in my advanced computer technology course, I think all but one of them is in physics or physics II right now, and they've actually been in contact with the teachers and for this farm bot that they've been working on, they've been getting, he had an extra solar panel for them to use and they're going over really the sort of the energy collection and things of that nature. And then they come down and we really work on the wiring and electronics and the math behind that and they go back and forth. And while curricularly, we're not crossing, it's, on a professional level, it's happening all the time at our schools.
And I know that was one of the plugs for the solar panels, was that opportunity for curriculum enhancement. So, and I should have started by saying thank you for the presentation. It was, I'll, I'll say there's probably 25% of it, I could not repeat to anyone in terms of what you were talking about, but it was very thorough and thank you so much for that update. I do have one last question and that's regarding the CIS class, because that's something which has been on the minds of several board members in terms of needing significant change. And I was wondering if you could speak to where it is right now and where you see that that could be improved? Not part of this department?
No, it's not part of ours.
So in business, okay. All right, I've got computer out of it, so therefore I assumed the connection. So, thank you so much.
Mr. Orban, you had a question that you wanted to ask?
Yeah. Just backing off of the curriculum for a second and going to the students engaged in the curriculum. I'm aware that only one in four women who have STEM degrees actually pursue a career in that field. Do you notice an enrollment kind of gap between male and female students or even an engagement difference?
So I'll, there's two questions, you have there. Engagement, the young women that take our classes are often our best students. The traditional mindsets that exist have been hard to overcome and we invite girls to be part of our programs all the time and it's just, we're really working on that. We've been talking with our administration, our, right here and down at our schools and we're trying to work on that, to come up with a solution. We know it exists.
We know, we know that that exists right across the state. It's, this is not a problem just in Fairfield, this is a problem right across the state in that I'm working with seventh and eighth graders and this is where they're starting to make those career choices. And some of their views with regard to engineering are quite outdated, outmoded, so that, I think that's where it starts. And that's, we really have been working quite hard to try and develop courses which engage both the, the girls and the boys at the lower level so that they, they can really get right in there at that level and therefore start making choices through their high school education. It's something we've been working on quite hard to do.
We'd go so far as I would love to offer girls-only class to get them interested in any of our areas. But that's a difficult thing to move forward with and to probably gain approval for to at the same time.
In the state, that is actually allowed in the state because of this problem. The state does allow girls-only tech ed classes, so you never know, it could be something that we look at for that very purpose and that's why they allow it.
Thanks for that question. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions down this line? I know, I see the line, I'm just checking to make sure you've got the last question.
The high school I work at, we have a girls-in-STEM club and they go back to the middle school and they teach the middle school girls. Just an odd.
Thank you. Tal.
Do you, um, you, your students have a chance to showcase their projects at the school level?
We have different opportunities. We have different opportunities. In graphic communications technology, for instance, we hold a bake shop project that we work on with Family Consumer Science and the Business Department. And they're able to design logos and production to actually be able to showcase, not only just to show their work, but to show it practically and being used in effective ways. We've had in the past a large wood showcase that Luke is up here to talk about.
I also have a wood show at the end of the year, which I invite anyone from the board directors or the town to visit. Normally, we have a wood show of all levels, from 10 all the way up to 40. And it's something that we always pride ourselves to showcase, because we do have a very unique and well-versed program. So again, we do invite you guys to come on down, take a look at these projects.
I wasn't even thinking for adults in the community, but more for just other students within the school that maybe don't know what these classes are all about. And when they're doing their course selection, just think, well, that's not for me. I don't know anything about that, just fit in with my, you know, college path. And I've, in seeing this presentation and just looking at those projects, I see a lot of missed opportunities potentially for students, just for lack of knowledge.
Yeah. One of the things we do have, we establish something called the Tour of the Electives during eighth-grade orientation night. So a group of CTE, both business, FCS, and technology education, and art, and music has been able to be part of that also. Any elective basically has been able to present. And we do a tour throughout the building to see the rooms, see the projects. As far as showcasing the projects, we probably need to do a better job. There's no doubt about that. So I'm going to say, yeah, we could do a better job.
I was thinking about the eighth grade, the kids coming, they're in middle school, and there's a very big difference from where in middle school, an eighth grader sees their life going, that potentially 10th grader, that I would like to see that.
I did, this, sorry. This year, I just set up a digital picture frame in the hallway just outside the PE locker room. So as the kids are waiting to get going with their gym classes, they can look at a slideshow of different projects that our students have done. And I put all, the name of the class that they made it in right there. So that's just on a constant loop, and we update it from time to time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, thank you very much for the work that you do with our students, and especially for this presentation.
Awesome.
Mr. Cummings, do we have a presentation, another PowerPoint? Okay, so we'll get ready for that.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Hello, sir.
Thank you.
Excellent, yeah.
Grab this out.
Totally need to, to help.
Okay, good, thank you. I just want to thank the Technology Department, Mr. McCandless and everyone else. That was exceptionally well-informed, and not only that, a very well-choreographed presentation. I was really impressed by the switching of the seats, with no rehearsal. But again, I think that that highlights, their presentation highlights the depth of programming, particularly in that department, but across all of our departments. And the next presentation from the Library Media Services Department, I think you'll see another aspect of this. The Library Media having the great ability to transcend the curricular areas across the elementary, middle and high schools, and their involvement, their deep involvement with each of those curricular areas. So I think Mr. Kairala's going to begin.
Good evening. I'm Pamela Kairala, the Director of Literacy and Learning here for the elementary schools. This is another trick from the tech ed department, I think. I'm proud to be here to introduce Nikki Callahan and Diane Fayela, who are going to be sharing some information about our library and media curriculum implementation. And I just want to go back in time a little bit to remind you that my colleague John Chia Peta and I were here last year, updating you on our English Language Arts curriculum. And we spoke about three big ideas that we have for our students in the area of literacy, which are that first, they'll love to read. They'll use reading to learn about themselves, about life, and about the world. And that they will have the curiosity to build and learn through a text set, looking at multiple perspectives and multiple authors, so that they can develop their own perspective, knowing that nonfiction is never really just one set of facts. There's always perspective there. And that then they will use their powerful writing voices to create a product in order to inform an audience with a purpose and a message in mind. So our library and media curriculum and all of the library and media specialists, K to 12, bring all of those pieces to life every day in our schools. And without further ado, here are Nikki and Diane.
Good evening. My name is Nikki Callahan. I'm the Library Media Specialist, or LMS, you'll hear that a lot, at Roger Ludlow Middle School. And I'm the liaison for the Library Media Department, K8.
And I'm Diane Fayela, one of the Library Media Specialists at both Ward and Ludlow, and the High School Library Department Liaison.
First, we'd like to thank the LMS and the TIS, which is the Technology Integration Specialists who are here. And just take a moment, maybe you could stand up, make a wave, whatever you want to do. Came to support us. We would also like to acknowledge the hard work of the library paraprofessionals, without whose support we could not provide our children with such a rich experience.
We are grateful to the board for the opportunity to present our progress implementing the curriculum that was passed in 2014.
Franklin Roosevelt said, "We cannot always build the future for our youth, but we can build our youth for the future."
In fact, David Warlich, a leading educational technologist, has said, "For the first time in history, we are preparing students for a future we cannot clearly describe."
And it is, with that in mind, that we share the Library Learning Commons vision of our curriculum that was passed in 2014. The Library Learning Commons serves as the school's physical and virtual center for active and engaged learning. As an integral part of the school community, the program supports student achievement through inquiry-based instruction, collaborative learning, and innovative thinking, with a focus on literacies for the digital age.
Before we begin, we need to acknowledge that our curriculum is different. Our curriculum is a foundational curriculum that is integrated and embedded in all of the other Board of Education curriculum. It is called a collaborative curriculum, since all of our learning objectives can be found in at least one other subject area. These are lifelong learning objectives that are the heart of all district learning. This is in line with the 2017 Horizon Report, which states that "Technology and digital tools have become ubiquitous, but they can be ineffective or dangerous when they are not integrated into the learning process in meaningful ways."
In 2014, when our curriculum was developed, it was based on the following national standards. Input and feedback were provided by the staff of the schools, the LMS, TISs, parents, and the curriculum leaders and experts. This new curriculum was based on the latest research and standards. And the national standards upon which we based our curriculum all agree that students learn these skills best when embedded in content area learning. The NIASK Indicator 2 states, "Does the school have measurable 21st-century learning expectations for all students that are integrated and interdisciplinary?" The Common Core states, "The need to conduct research and to produce and consume media is embedded into every aspect of today's curriculum." Therefore, our curriculum was written and intended as a collaborative interdisciplinary mission.
There are five big ideas or categories that guide our standards and learning objectives: inquiry and information skills, critical thinking and creativity, communication and collaboration, independent reading, and technology skills.
Each of these big ideas were broken down into clear standards. And then those were broken down into learning objectives, resulting in a comprehensive list of 22 exit skills for a 12th grade student.
Then we broke down each of those skills to identify what the skills would look like in each grade. For a total of 22 library media skills identified in each grade level for those five big idea categories. And these documents are all available on the district website.
This new curriculum required some changes in direction and in thinking. As part of this process, we participated in a year-long Learning Commons workshop run by CES called "Reimagining Your Library." This program was run by Fran Campar, then the head of Greenwich Library Media Program, and included many other school districts in Fairfield County. It was recently reviewed in a Connecticut Post article in January. We worked with nationally renowned experts like Mark Edwards and David Lurcher, who is credited with creating the idea of the Learning Commons.
Through that program, we refined our thinking and began some transformative changes in four major areas: the learning space itself, learning in the library, learning throughout the school, and the role of the LMS or NTIS.
In the traditional Library Media Center, the students and teachers came to our space to use the resources. Instruction of the Library Media Curriculum happened in one place with one person. The Library Learning Commons model and the collaborative curriculum allows instruction to be embedded in all other curricula, and enables all teachers to facilitate that learning in any part of the school at any time.
Students have access to resources and instruction, because learning is happening simultaneously in the library and in classrooms throughout the school. The library itself becomes an adaptable learning space, supporting multiple activities happening at once, led by multiple people. And any classroom becomes an extension of the library and the library program. Our curriculum becomes a central pillar for all learning in the school.
In order to support learning in all parts of the school at all times, we have developed a very strong online presence. Our library websites become resources for everyone, with tutorials, increased access to digital databases, increased access to digital books, project webpages, inquiry instruction, and research skills. Teachers, students, and parents are using library resources throughout the school any time of the day.
The LMS and TIS not only provide these online resources, but also provide direct instruction and collaborative teaching, as they always have. In addition, they help with instructional planning for any lesson, coaching, training, and leadership in innovative technologies and teaching strategies, professional development for teachers, virtual lessons for teachers and students. They curate resources for any project, and still manage the space, and still promote the love of reading. For more specific examples, we will highlight some of the changes at each level.
In the elementary schools, the LMS work on a blended model of both collaborative classes, as well as one fixed class per week in grades K through 5 for specific instruction in library research and technology skills. We developed a technology skills framework for K through 5 to ensure students were acquiring the same skills across the district, and are now in the process of developing one for digital citizenship. The LMS goal is to tie these lessons to what is happening in the classroom in order to support that learning, developing lessons that teach library media skills but meet the instructional needs of our specific communities.
The LMSs were included in all Language Arts Unit Writing, and 100% of the revised Language Arts Implementation Guides have embedded library media learning objectives and collaborative teaching points. In addition, the Library Media Specialists were the lead teachers on the new Social Studies Unit Writing Committees, and played a crucial role in both developing the instruction and building the resources. Often, we push into classrooms to co-teach these skills, and we provide classroom resources for every Language Arts and Social Studies unit in our ongoing support of nonfiction, reading, and writing.
The LMS serve as leaders in all aspects of technology integration in their buildings by providing instruction to both students and teachers. This second-grade student is comparing the information she is finding in two different databases in order to understand that different sources give us different information.
Let's look at some more student work from the elementary level. Here is a fifth-grade presentation for a Social Studies Unit on Colonization. In this picture, a first-grade student was using tools in Wixi to draw and type. During a first-grade research lesson, the focus is on developing research questions. This is a fourth-grade coding lesson, and this is an example of an oral presentation from a first-grader on animal research.
Many LMSs have begun to develop maker spaces in order to foster critical thinking, problem-solving, and systems thinking, incorporating STEAM concepts into many lessons.
We also added coding classes to our fixed rotation from kindergarten on, as well as robotics classes in the upper grades.
And of course, we still spread our original passion for the love of reading. In the middle school teams of the LMS and TIS play a very similar overall role in their buildings, but their instruction and collaboration is flexibly scheduled, and skills are always embedded and integrated in a content area curriculum not taught separately. We develop online project sites with integrated library media skills, and provide curated print and digital resources to teachers. Let's look at some student work. This is an eighth-grade history research project called Promise, Problem, and Progress. It's on the progressive era. This is a seventh-grade math project, where students design their dream bedroom and use spreadsheets, formulas, hyperlink documents, and geometric design. This is a seventh-grade project on human environment interaction, where students have to take a stance on a topical issue, and then write an argumentative essay, and build a website. This is a seventh-grade Spanish project, where students build multiple-page websites about a specific country, all in Spanish. And of course, we still spread our original passion for the love of reading.
At the high school level, we have a unique ability to view student progress. The Library Department conducted a curricular crosswalk and found that almost all of the high school academic expectations were equivalent to one or more skills in the Library Department collaborative curriculum. The high schools have been developing and implementing schoolwide rubrics using these expectations. Since the two goals are so closely aligned, any progress in student achievement that is demonstrated from the high school academic expectations would also be applicable to the library curriculum. Our role is to provide instructional support to staff and students to enable this growth. The high schools have made a concerted effort to include our student community in decision-making. The Learning Commons has a library advisory board, library volunteers, and student members on the library learnings committee. Programs and projects in the Learning Commons are often at the request of students or student organizations. Let's take a look at some student work. Surely not as cute as some of the work you've seen in lower grades, but we are proud of it just the same. Work includes research papers and annotated bibliographies, history documentaries, collaborative note-taking, podcasts, slam poetry, and student films. In truth, work in many classrooms has its origins in our library curriculum. As the new curriculum is being considered, the high school has been adapting to evolving needs. The Learning Commons model brings teachers to the forefront in instruction of our library curriculum. So the LMS naturally plays a larger role in professional development for teachers. We have been exploring a variety of formats to make teachers aware of the new curriculum, and aware of the rich collection of resources that we have curated for instruction. There is so much here to support not only implementation of the library curriculum, but also initiatives with technology and 21st-century learning. As instruction is distributed through the school, there has been more focus on accessing the library virtually. So the high school has moved to an upgraded platform, LibGuides. This platform for the library virtual presence is used frequently by colleges and is very user-friendly. It is a work in progress with the goal to provide the entire learning community with a central location for research and inquiry resources. The Library Media Specialists have been an integral part of a cross-curricular collaborative team focusing on independent reading. Studies show that students read less as they get older. We are actively fighting this trend with a comprehensive reader advisory effort. We know that when students are paired with titles that match their interests, they become lifelong readers. One of the most valuable services that the Library Media Specialists provide is a thoughtfully curated collection of print and digital titles meant to appeal to a wide variety of students and diverse interests. Student recommendations are encouraged and welcome. In order to provide the greatest access, the library has increasingly invested in multiple print copies and digital books. In addition, this enables students to read and share their reading experience. We have also adapted our space to encourage browsing, book sharing, and special events such as author visits. Along with the new department curriculum, the board also passed new curriculum for our studio classes that are taught in the Learning Commons. These classes combine- Student recommendations are encouraged and welcome. In order to provide the greatest access, the library has increasingly invested in multiple print copies and digital books. In addition, this enables students to read and share their reading experience. We have also adapted our space to encourage browsing, book sharing, and special events such as author visits. Along with the new department curriculum, the board also passed new curriculum for our studio classes that are taught in the Learning Commons. These classes combine technology skills with authentic professional skills for a true 21st century learning experience. One of the most innovative programs that has come out of the new curriculum is the Makerspace Program. For us at the high school, the Makerspaces are the embodiment of the high school academic expectations. Activities include coding, engineering, construction, arts, and problem-solving. They can have a service focus such as making pillowcase dresses for girls in Africa, or just offer students the opportunity to explore new skills, talents, or careers. We offer several options for Makerspace Programs. There are monthly Makerspace Programs and mobile Makerspace cards that can go into the classrooms. There are Makerspace Kits that students can check out at any time. As well, we are moving to teacher- and student-led Makerspace Events to share common passions. The goal is to move from knowledge consumption to knowledge creation in the Learning Commons. In both schools, the Learning Commons have dedicated a space to an audio and video recording studio. This space is open to students to use for the completion of school projects or to pursue personal passions. Some of the funding for this has been provided by the Fairfield Foundation for Education, for which we are grateful. And of course, we will still spread our original passion for the love of reading.
Because our curriculum is integrated and our role supports the instruction in content areas, we do not collect separate student achievement data, but we would like to share some metrics that do help us understand and calibrate our progress. Other than using books to create mazes for our robots, we still do circulate over 325,000 print books per year. At the high schools, book circulation has increased over 60% since the curriculum was passed. We also have digital ebook platforms. In K through 5, our digital ebook platform is Big Universe. Students accessed over 68,000 books last year.
Other indications of nonfiction reading can be seen in the increased use of our wide variety of nonfiction databases. For example, PebbleGo is a K to 2 nonfiction database that supports digital reading for various curricula. You could see the increase in access to this resource over the past few years. Also, Science Flix is another database where over 6,000 articles were read by students in K to 8. At the high school, our online database collections are very widely used. For example, students searched our ABC Clio group of databases over 100,000 times last year.
Some other data. 100% of students in grades 4 through 12 are now using Google Apps for Education. 100% of the LMS and TIS instructional goals are aligned with our library media curriculum. In elementary school, 100% of Language Arts and Social Studies units that have been updated have library media learning objectives embedded. 100% of students have coding lessons in K through 4. In middle school, we have at least 20 collaborative projects in various subject areas in each middle school. Over 300 classes per month occur in the Library Learning Commons during a collaborative project, about 75 classes per week. Approximately 500 individual students visit the Library Learning Commons per week for individual needs other than the project needs. In high school, Learning Commons attendance is over 7,000 student visits per month. Also, 100 classes meet in the Learning Commons monthly. As a fun visual, the TIS at Fairfield Woods Middle School graphed the Learning Commons lab and cart schedules. As you can see, the usage in the 10 spaces is constant and often booked at 100% capacity.
Moving forward, we would like to continue building on what we achieved in the last three years. We would like to continue to lead in the Digital Workspace Technology Initiative, embed inquiry skills across the curriculum, and focus on the new science curriculum with both instruction and resources.
We would like to continue to implement digital citizenship instruction and to support technology integration in all aspects of the curriculum.
We would also like to continue to transform our spaces to facilitate student learning and to develop core and consistent Makerspace initiatives.
And of course, we want to continue spreading our passion for the love of reading.
As we said in the beginning, for the first time in history, we are preparing students for a future we cannot clearly describe.
And because we cannot always build the future for our youth, our focus is squarely on building our youth for the future.
We will leave you once again with our vision for our collaborative library media program and the five big ideas. We want to thank the board for your continued support of our program, and of course, we'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Do we have questions from the board? So I was in an old library in my college, and they closed it down and built a brand-new Babson library, books everywhere. At my 35th reunion, that library had been closed down, and now they have a brand-new Learning Commons, and you don't see any books. Is that where you're headed in terms of Learning Commons?
Certainly at K through 8, I can answer that. The Learning Commons definitely focuses on technology and digital, but I have to say, for K through 8 students, the vast majority prefer to read a print book.
And I think you could see by the circulation statistics at the high school that print books aren't going away anytime soon.
So we have both.
My son's a journalist. I wish I could say that about the print media, but that's a whole different question. Other questions from board members? Mrs. Maxon Connolly.
So I think I have it down to three questions. First, the same question that I had asked with the tech ed department, is that from the curriculum that we approved in 2014, have you found things that you have needed while staying true to those goals and those sequences, et cetera, that you have found we needed to adapt or change something?
Well, I think part of, because our curriculum is so embedded into the other curricula, every time a new curriculum is passed, we would go back and look at how the library media support may can support that curricula and embed skills there. So we're constantly in a cycle of change.
We also at elementary school went to that fixed class that was not part of the original Board of Ed when we were planning it. So we had to develop very consistent curriculum and skills across all 11 schools, so we knew that the students in those fixed classes were getting the same skills taught.
I apologize, I'm not sure what you mean by the fixed classroom.
So a fixed schedule is that they have one 40-minute class per six-day schedule in library media.
Thank you. And then, obviously, since you do have a curriculum and you do have, you're looking to measure your progress through goals, how do you work to assess where you're achieving what you want, since I assume it's the teachers who will be doing the actual assessing, you're helping with the delivery of the skill work, but how do you know what's being achieved?
Well, at the high school level, we're...
You sped very quickly past that part, and I don't remember it well enough off the top of my head, so to know that, you know, what they need to know and be able to do, at the end of second grade, you have your own goal, how do you know that all the second graders, for example, will have achieved the goals that are part of your curriculum?
I'll do elementary, middle school. In middle school, we work with teachers, and they use the same rubrics and skill assessment lists, and almost every single collaborative project that we do have a process grade that are our skills, and both teachers, and I tend to grade most of the sixth-grade ones, but teachers in seventh and eighth grade will grade that process piece as well, so we know that as students are going through, that they're getting, they are achieving those skills. In elementary school, because we do have that fixed class, we do have rubrics, we have a technology skills checklist in K through 5 that has a rubric, and so every library media specialist in those classes are very well aware that, and can assess those skills, and we're working right now to create one for digital citizenship as well. And then I think the teachers, I think the teachers grade most of the other collaborative ones.
At the high school, there's academic expectations that kind of outline what we want every student to know and be able to do. And in fact, all of the high school academic expectations are similar to the library curriculum expectations, so we see that any growth in any of the high school academic expectations based on rubrics would be the same because those are the same skills that the library also has embedded in their curriculum. As well, we work with the teachers to develop assessments and work with them to use a schoolwide rubric so that we can see growth of students over time.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, I guess, is on that topic of digital citizenship, is that I've been studying plagiarism quite a bit beyond just policing it for years, and, you know, really seeing the, so much of the recent work, studies are about, it's a skill issue. You know, it's not just awareness, and it's not just being consisted about punitive consequences for doing it, but literally because the access for cutting and pasting is done with such ease, that literally you're having to do some pretty fundamental skill work to help them understand that aspect of academic integrity. Are you finding that that's something that you are able to really explicitly address, or is that more with the classroom teacher?
I teach it every day.
Thank you.
In every project.
Every time we're working with students, it's really a part of what I do at the high school. A lot of the teachers, every time they have a project, will introduce their, the academic expectations and having to do with students' original work and ethical use of...
We also really work on note-taking, and that's part of that.
Yes.
And note-taking, in your own words. So we teach note-taking in K through 8. I mean, we teach it every project, every time, and we really try to be consistent with it.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mrs. Vitale?
I just have a question about, because I suspect this is budget, this is driven by the budget, for transforming spaces for future plans. What do you envision future libraries looking like, and what support would you need from the Board of Ed in terms of funding?
They're mobile, so you could move things around and accommodate learning for that day, so they need to be able to move. So bookshelves on wheels, chairs and tables on wheels, stackable. We also need a lot more comfortable seating, because right now we're storage, many schools are still storage spaces, not learning spaces, and that's the transformation that we want to do. But that is a lot of money, and I know a lot of PTAs have been incredibly supportive of this transformation, but we're still really in the middle of it, and it does require quite a lot of money for furniture, really.
A lot of it has to do with making sure that we have flexible work areas, so if a teacher wanted to come in and work in the Learning Commons with a small group of students, they'd have an area that was kind of a little bit designated for that, also for students to work collaboratively, and some students even to work independently because that's the area they need to work and think in.
Other questions from board members? Thank you again for the service. Thank you again for the presentation.
Thank you.
And your continued work. Onto public comment. We allow public comment on agenda items only. If an item is up for a vote, you can wait until the board has discussion, and then we call people up to comment just prior to the vote, or you can comment now. You can't comment both times, so you can choose one or the other. And so at the moment, let me invite people from the public who wish to come up and present to the board. Please, whoever's first to the table.
Sorry, good evening. Thank you, Chairman Dwyer. I know there's only about three minutes for everyone, and there's multiple people that want to speak.
You should sit down for the camera angle and the microphone. Thank you.
Thanks. So just a very narrow topic tonight, while the board is considering a number of options for improving the school system in the future.
So first name, and then each of you do get three minutes.
Oh.
So unless you want to all do the work in three minutes between the three of you...
Quite possible. Joe, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Joe Pizarlik. I live in the Sherman School District.
Thank you.
Alex Pleitzus also in the Sherman School District.
And Matt Elgar, same Sherman School District.
Thank you.
So I was trying to move it along rather quickly for you. I know it's a long night. So again, just a couple of parents here from the neighborhood in a particular area where pocket redistricting was one that was a very hot topic while you're considering Mendy topics under Agenda Item 7 this evening. There was a general request, if possible, if it made sense, given the time of the topic, if the board would consider addressing pocket redistricting, just kind of explaining what it means, and if there's an opportunity for you to afford your thoughts on it, that would be appreciated. That's all we have. Thank you. Easy.
I think that means that you have seven minutes in the bank. But next meeting, I can't give them back to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Who else would like to come forward?
Hello, my name is Sarah Ferris, also from Sherman School District. I have two children there, and I won't take three minutes, but we have the same concerns as the gentleman who sat before us.
Other comments that people want to make who are at the table at the moment?
We just are concerned about the pocket redistricting. We want to know exactly how it's going to work, and we would like to plan to stay at Sherman, so we want to know more about it.
Oh, yeah, I'm Sarah Newland. I'm on Turney Road, I'm at Sherman, and I'm here about the pocket redistricting, and I, I've never done this before, so I'll just, you know, you can just, I want to advocate for you to just pop that one right off and not, and not do that one at all, because it makes no sense, and I can just tell you why. Because, you know, most of us, many of us are walkers, and so the goal is to move us to Holland Hill and then to Woods. It's not a neighborhood school, it's budget positive, going from budget neutral, it's highly disruptive, somewhat destructive, it's a stopgap measure at best, so it's not remotely... It's, I mean, I think the town should be considering town-wide redistricting, so we're all sort of feeling pain all over. I mean, the whole idea of even closing schools makes no sense. I mean, there needs to be sort of facilities changed collectively. The, okay, well, I think a pocket idea is horrible, and nobody should be stressing about closing schools, nor should we be, you know, pitted against other people in our neighborhood, and, and it's been awful for my family, and I'm happy to consider any kind of redistricting overall collectively, but this has been awful. And we want to stay at Sherman because it's our local school, we're walkers, but...
So I think more specifically, we live within less than half a mile of Sherman, and to redistrict us to Holland Hill would take us two and a half miles to a different school, so we walk, our walk to Sherman together is, we walk together, it's less than five minutes, but Holland Hill is a nine-minute drive from where we live now. I can stand on my back porch and see Sherman. So I would like to know how that would be beneficial for my children instead of harmful. They would be devastated.
Hi, I'm Megan Dockham also at Sherman, and my, I guess my, one of my main reasons for coming tonight, you know, yes, to voice some concerns, but also there is so much talk and chatter, and I have no idea like how realistic or how likely is this actually? So should I be super, get myself all upset? You know, should we spend a lot of time on this? We're all really busy, all of you, all of us. Can you give us any insight as to, is this actually something that's going to happen, or was it just something that that consulting firm, an idea that they came up with and presented? Can anyone help us there? I'm super confused, I guess.
Okay, so as part of an instruction, we take public comment, but we do not engage in giving back conversation. We listen to your concerns, and that helps inform the board in their discussion. We do have town hall meetings twice a year, and so that is where we try and set up an instance where you could come and ask us a question, board members would respond, and we could have dialogue, but we don't do it at a particular regular meeting.
Okay, I understand that. So how do we find out the answer to the question I just asked?
Listen to tonight's discussion and future discussions at the board table.
Okay.
And then a PTA, a visit to the PTA is made by a board member each year as invited, and so if you have a particular question in mind, I'm sure that either the superintendent or a member of this board could come to the PTA and... or a member of this board could come to the PTA and, you could come to the PTA. We schedule one visit a year, but if you wanted a second one, we would accommodate you. So we could have more back and forth discussion at a PTA meeting, but that would be for general information. The only way that you can keep track of what the board is thinking is to listen to the board meeting because we take action as a board in a public meeting.
All right.
Any other comments that somebody at the table wished to make?
You know, hi, I'm Melanie Ross, also a Sherman parent, also Walker, half a mile from there. So we would like to stay in our district as well and also continue on with our feeder school of Ludlow and forever Ludlow. So this kind of, the thought of going on a bus and traveling, you know, that great amount of distance was not, you know, the reason that we chose where, where we were. And more in terms of getting down to an answer of, you know, of the agenda of the research or the firm alone and McBroom in terms of the agenda items of eliminating a high school and eliminating an elementary school, those kind of concerns. It creates a lot of emotional distress to the families and it's a lot of chatter. A lot of us can't, are not here because of the young kids, but that's, that's our concern there. And we are, you know, we do try and come to all the meetings, but so forth, you know, I just wanted to let you know that, that we are here because of that and.
Okay, thank you.
Very important.
It's been a little bit difficult to keep track of the minutes with it going back and forth, but do you have a final comment as a team of four?
It is very important for us to remain Sherman School, Sherman Walker, Sherman Neighborhood. We do not want to leave Sherman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there others that wish to come forward and talk on that subject? Because it appears as though there might have been a couple.
Yeah, absolutely.
State your name and address.
My name is Shannon Sherry, 331 Riverside Drive. I'm a Sherman parent as well. It'll, I'm not going to say anything much different than them, but my, my main concern is this, this came up two years ago and it was stamped out because it was wildly unpopular with all the parents. Townwide, it seemed, for the most part. There was a small minority that was pushing for it and it appeared to be political reasons that they were pushing for back then. Now it's come up again. I, I don't know why it's come up, but my concern is when, when will it be discussed? At, like, which meeting will it be discussed? And, you know, you say that there's meetings twice a year.
Town hall meetings.
Where, where we can have an interaction with you.
Correct.
But will the decision be made before one of these meetings becomes available to the public?
Again, without getting back and forth with dialogue.
I apologize.
I think that answer will become when we have discussion.
Okay.
Because we have not set any, any date certain where this conversation will be finished.
Okay, so would, would that, the answer to that question be given at your discussion?
Without having, getting into the back and forth discussion that we don't do, I'd like to leave it there.
Okay.
My name's Kathleen Raymond and I'm also a Sherman parent and I just wanted to express my opinion against the pocket redistricting and for all the reasons that others have said that we made a plan when we purchased our home for the school that we wanted our children to go to. We purchased our home before oldest child started kindergarten because we wanted them to continue at the same elementary school and we feel it to be disruptive to us as a family. We also feel it to be more costly to the district to be paying for buses when we are less than a half a mile away from the school.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward and talk on an agenda item?
Good evening. Name is Mark Schalub of 429 Verna Hill Road in Fairfield. I'm here to talk about the elementary school closings and I have two kids at Dwight in the first and second grade. I'm up here on my own accord. Hi Jennifer. And look, I think you understand the disruption this creates, the anxiety. I'm not going to, you know, appeal to that sense. I do want to come at it from another perspective that I encourage you to consider in your debate. What's been happening to our community as a whole in Fairfield over the past few years? We haven't received that much good news. The traffic's getting worse, the Metro North is getting worse, our taxes are going up with the elimination of the SALT deduction, GE is left, United Technologies is moving jobs away, our property values are under pressure. This creates more pressure on the town. Now, closing elementary schools, redistricting, this creates a level of anxiety and pressure on families that, you know, frankly, a lot of us are wondering, why do we still live in this town? Well, I can tell you, because it's a wonderful town to live in. I'm proud to be a Fairfield resident. I want to raise my kids here and so do my neighbors, but with this sort of overhang on our lives, it's really, really hard for us to justify that decision, especially when the economic pressures are mounting. It's a terrific community. I can't speak for the other schools that you're considering, but Dwight is a school that works. It's a community that works. It's one that we're very proud of. It's almost like a family and by closing it, you know, it'll just, it'll just be crushing not only to the kids, but to the adults as well. And I just wanted to say that and, and hopefully you can consider that decision within the other things that have been happening and the cumulative effect that that has on all of us. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you for coming forward. Please state your name and address.
Dale Resnick, 258 Steiner Street. I'm very nervous, but I have to speak for Jennings because everybody is speaking for their own school and our school is a hidden gem within this community and like everybody else, we moved to our area because we wanted that school. And we've been listening to the schools possibly closing for so long. We've been listening to K through two at this school and this, and the rest at this school and we really, we've had enough. And we need a decision and we need that decision to be that Jennings will stay open. And I'm hoping that tonight you will consider that because we'll, you'll be, have a lot of unhappy people. Thank you.
Thank you for coming forward. Anybody else? Please state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Jennifer Gaynor and I'm at 461 Riverside Drive. And I'm a Sherman mom and I support the rest of our Sherman folks here where we love the school, my son loves the school, and we are absolutely against pocket redistricting. And to be frank, I was in a Board of Education forum meeting a few months ago, I think right before the vote, and I voted and supported many of you sitting here because I really, I really liked what I heard and there were very creative solutions when this topic came up in that forum meeting. And I'm looking right around the table. All of you had, in my opinion and my husband's opinion, some great ideas to get a little more creative than just a simple, what seems like a simple pocket redistricting on a sheet of paper. So I just urge all of you to resurface those ideas that came up during those forum meetings and get creative with this solution so we can keep as many students in the schools that they're in and support our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward? And state your name and address.
Hi, I'll be quick. Liz Matthews, 260 Wakeman Lane, Dwight parent. And just want to reiterate what everyone says, I'm against redistricting, pocket redistricting. I grew up in Darien, loved my elementary school and was redistricted and it's, I still am annoyed about it. I loved my school. I'm forty, I'm forty years old and I still think about it.
You hold a grudge a long time.
I do. I mean, I loved it and I went to this other school and it just, I just want to reiterate what the last woman just said, to try to think of more creative ways, just so our kids won't be affected and we can have, you know, have them stay at the schools that they love. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Eunice Oleksu from Sherwin Village Drive. I'm a Sherman mom also. And just like everyone else has said, I am definitely not in favor of the pocket redistricting, especially with our small community school of Sherman. And just moving like, you know, ninety-seven, a hundred students who are mostly walkers, who all live within a mile away, just doesn't make sense. And it would just be, just like everyone has said, disruptive, heartbreaking. I'm a brand new kindergarten mom and have another child on his way up to kindergarten. I would like, love to have them stay in Sherman for the reason why we moved here eight years ago to our neighborhood. So I would love to have the pocket redistricting off the table. So, thank you.
Thank you. And anybody else? I'll say on the topics that have been mentioned so far, I know there's probably one other topic that somebody might want to cover, but is anybody on these topics? Seeing nobody come forward, what about any other topics?
Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street. The topic I'd like to talk about tonight, address tonight is the approval of policies on political activities of school employees. That's the first, the item on the agenda tonight. First, I'd like to thank the board for answering my question last time this first came up about the impetus for the change, why, why the change? And the question I would now have as you guys get into a discussion later is before we charted this path, down this path, did we look at other surrounding areas before we committed to do so in developing a policy? I would also like to say, I'd like to thank you folks for taking the changes, making the changes and actually taking into account public comment from the last time and I saw that, I was gratified to see that. Having said that, I do recall the discussion last time about the policy being proposed being less prescriptive. I did some research and I couldn't find anything at all, first of all, on community relations on point thirteen eleven for the districts of Darien, New Canaan, Wilton, Easton, Stratford. Maybe I missed something, but I didn't see anything there. I did find policies for Greenwich, Westport, which was a direct link to Cave, Norwalk, Trumbull, Stanford and Weston, but I think it's very fair to say that not a single one of these would be construed as more prescriptive than what we've come up with. Draw your attention to thirteen eleven point one A again. Cave has a one-page policy restricted to political activities of school employees, which is basically the Westport policy. Our proposal basically mirrors Greenwich's almost verbatim with respect to the first two aspects of the political activities of school employees and the performance of civic duties of employees. Then you get into the individual responsibility and participating in political functions. We become more prescriptive and that's where Greenwich's ends. But we go on to add another entire section entitled political materials and or engagement as part of the instructional program. The question I hope to hear more discussion about among the board members as to why we need to go down that path, which obviously takes us into the classroom, which Mr. Smoller last time cautioned about on our first meeting. I draw your attention to the last point E again, which I saw still remains, I know it was revised, but still remains, a teacher shall not use professional interaction with students to further his or her own political aims or views of those of any other individual group. As I said last time, I would hope that would be scrapped entirely or at best maybe put with the intention to, but I really still think it ought to be scrapped. Nothing like a real life example to convey my concerns. I know my time is out and my time is up, but just last week, we had a, as you know, the walkout even in Woods and we had a fabulous, a fabulous day and I actually sent home an email blast to all the parents telling them what a great day it was and what we did in our social studies classes. And I'm not going to read the letter, but I will just paraphrase something that I got back from a parent, which said, what I was doing was political activism and what I was doing is quote, "child abuse," pointing out that these are undeveloped individuals, pointing out that I was a child predator. So just to use as an example of some of the things that.
Director, your time is up, but finish your sentence.
Okay, my, my sentence is, sentences, I'll come back to that point about a teacher not using professional interaction. What this does is give this person a platform to point to as a policy that I hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to come forward and present to the board on an agenda item?
Hi, Bob Smoller. I'm also a teacher in the district and the president of the FEA and I do want to congratulate the board in, in addressing the, the issue on political activity in the schools. I think, you know, one of the things you, you don't realize until you get into a situation is what kinds of things could be coming back at you when you create a policy like this. And as Mr. Sahagian just pointed out, the walkout day was a tremendous day for students to exercise their initiative, but there were numerous comments that came back from various parties about gun control, about, you know, the types of, the types of encouragement that students were given. We were at the school safety committee meeting where people objected to the fact, the fact that the district was participating in the walkout. And I, I really wonder if being as prescriptive as we are about what we are allowed to or not allowed to say in the classroom might be setting us up, our district up for some, a lot of, a lot of negative responses from parents and a lot of headaches. And so whereas most of the other districts seem to be staying away from this topic as it relates to the classroom, I think at this point, I feel pretty strongly that we need to, you know, stop before we start prescribing what can be said or not said in the classroom and allow people just to use their good judgment, working with the, their house masters, their principals. And certainly any policy at this point that prescribes what can or can't be said, I would leave out because people can interpret that any way they want and come at the district and come at the teachers based on how they want to interpret what goes on in the classroom. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward? State your name and address.
Suzanne Mesko, 123 Rygate Road. I want to thank you for the policy before you tonight on political activity in the classroom. After watching at home, my concern is, one, a comment made by the superintendent that this policy might not cover some of the things that had happened in the past. And if that is the case, given some of the political involvement of our teachers' union and some of the political activity in our town, I ask that that be something looked at, whether it's in regulation or in this policy. In regards to teacher activity, I did listen to the teachers and I'm going to say that as a parent, I can walk into various history classes in the middle school and high school. Before I sit down as a parent, I can pretty much gauge the political affiliation of that teacher based on the memorabilia located in the room. And while I appreciate the use of free speech in that method, it does kind of set a tone in the classroom. Additionally, when a student asks the teacher for their opinion or where they stand on something, I would rather it be that the teacher takes that as an opportunity to turn it back to our students after hearing the presentations we heard tonight of, what do you think? Here's the material we've gone over, what's your commentary? What, what are you coming to as a conclusion? Instead of the teacher saying, this is what I believe, because what you're going to find in high school and what we are learning, I am learning, my son is learning in college, is that in college, they're tired of our students coming in saying, no, 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 what do, what do you want? And if you tell us what you want, like, I'll, I'll give it to you. You know, I, I, you know, you tell me what you want to get the grade and I'll do it. That can't be what we're doing. That, that, that can't continue. Our students need to be able to take the data, whether it's whatever the teacher has given them in curriculum and instruction, and let them start coming to the conclusions. Let them base the fact on what they're finding. And so I personally think this is a very good policy and while I appreciate, there's the fine line of free speech and I appreciate that it's a shame that parents didn't see the walkout for what it really was. I, I've sat on curriculum committees and seen parents, you know, rile at some of the history curriculum. It's important. But on another side, we need to give our students the tools to formulate their own decisions and not just be that of the teachers who are teaching them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and present to the board? Seeing nobody stand up, back to the board for old business, approval of policies. So the recommended motion for thirteen eleven point one is that the Board of Education approve policy thirteen eleven point one, community relations, political activities of school employees. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, seconded by Mrs. Jacobson. Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, do you want to make some opening comments?
Sure. First of all, I want to explain to the board what happened at our last policy committee meeting because normally if going from a first reading to the time for a vote, we very rarely ever make changes. In this case, we did. We didn't believe that they were of a substantial enough nature to warrant a second first reading. However, if the board feels otherwise, you know, there is certainly no urgency to do this quickly. Um. this quickly. So I'll just put out there that at some point, if people feel that, either based on comments, either based on additional questions that they have, or just based on the language changes we did make, that they would want more time than, I'm not sure of the process to withdraw a motion, but-
After discussion and before vote, I'll look at the board to see whether it seems that the discussion has said, "Let's make this another first read." But let's proceed as if it is the voting read.
So just to explain what we did at our last policy meeting, because we do value the input of the public period and certainly of our staff and administration, I actually went back to Fair TV, re-watched that portion of the video, and took two pages of notes in synopsis of every comment offered up by the, during the public comment. And in policy, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Jacobson, and myself went through the comments of each staff member to see where did we feel that the policy, "No, we're set for this, this isn't an issue." On the other hand, several of the comments prompted us to really reconsider aspects of the language. Everything that you see in the policy that's redlined, that was changed on policy 1311.1, was a direct result of feedback from the public, of thinking, "We can do this part better." And I will make a general statement that, like when we did the life-threatening food allergy policy, same idea here, which is, "We're not positive we got this right." We think it made a lot of positive steps. We think it responded to many issues that we've heard in the public, and so, but if problems arise, I certainly would want to hear about a policy, and I'd have no problem revisiting. I will, if I may be allowed, a personal side. The communication to a staff member that was just reported horrifies me. And obviously, I hope that the administrative of that building stepped in for that teacher to address that with that parent as being incredibly inappropriate, and I would hope all of the parents who become aware of this policy and who feel compelled to communicate with a teacher based on this policy, do so in a civil manner. No one is out there to do something wrong. And if they feel that there's been a breach of this policy, I hope they handle it better than that email as reported there, because that is wildly inappropriate and so unfair to our staff. But back to the policy at hand, so again, we did go through every comment offered up through public comment, looked at the policy, made several changes. One thing that we do want to remind people about, in many ways, is at the very end of the policy, the second-to-last paragraph, which says, "Nothing in this policy shall be interpreted to impose a burden on the constitutionally protected speech of a staff member or student." In some ways, that's probably the most important item on there. The reason why our policy becomes more prescriptive and does not just rely on a simple line like that is our attempt to raise the awareness of what can cross the line. This was meant in certain ways to be a guide, where there was no guidance. At no point during this time was there an offer from staff to take this off policy committee's agenda and have this be something done internally. It was left to us, and we forged ahead. We worked off of, none of this language was crafted in its original from us. We got all of these samples from Cape, which all come from other districts, and we put this together. It was initially far more prescriptive than this, which, over time, you know, I very much took to heart the comment of, "We were creating a solution to a problem that didn't exist," and that we needed to back that off significantly. But the points that are in here are points that are true, whether they exist in this explicit a nature or not. Specifically, for example, to that point of E, "A teacher may not use their professional interaction to further a political aim." They can't. And now this is making sure that that is clear. Now, that is not to say that you're not addressing topics and that there's that balance. We thought that was a great change that we made, inspired by the public, not that we're great for making the change. At the bottom of page A, you know, that it was a great point that someone brought up in the public, that every time an issue comes up, are you having to stop and say, "Well, here's the right, here's the left, here's the center on each issue?" I mean, we would have to be voting on curricula changes, because the pace of the course would slow so significantly. And in policy, we had a discussion. No, the general intent was, there needs to be a balance. If the only perspective offered in a course is Howard Zinn, there's a problem. And if you're not familiar with Howard Zinn, take a quick look at that. It is a perspective, it is a valuable one, it is one highly regarded in many places, but it is of one pull, and there are other perspectives, and that we just want there to be a balance. You know, the idea of political activities versus campaign activities, we thought that that would be an appropriate change. And very good point from the public onto the backside would be that idea of, you know, adding the, but not limited to, history and civics, because in fact, these can come up in so many courses, English Language Arts, Science, et cetera. So we did want to pull back again. This was always about trying to have actually a positive piece of communication, quite frankly, going forward. But to be clear, in terms of impetus, there have been mistakes made, and we are trying to address that as a community, that this is something that we are interested in. If the board wishes to have something even less prescriptive than that, then, you know, this is not something that my life is at stake with, you know. We thought we are bringing forward some good work here, and so I'll, at this point, open it up to any questions.
First, Mrs. Jacobson, you seconded it. Do you have any comments that you wish to make?
I think she summed it up pretty well, actually, but no, I would just reiterate the point that the policy committee looked at this for a very long time, and this has actually been going on for a long time in policy. So the culmination of the previous board's work and this work going forward, and in taking in consideration all of the public comments that were made, and trying to really come to a place where we felt was a really very balanced perspective, a very middle-of-the-road perspective, that takes some precautions in areas that we know have happened in our schools, while also making sure that our students are just being exposed to all viewpoints over the course in term of any particular course of political ideas or philosophies or whatnot are being taught to them. So, of course, you know, it's only the second time that the board has seen it, so always open to us hearing any other ideas or language changes that you may be open to, if that's the way the board wants to go, and we'll be happy to take it or not. But if not, I'm very comfortable with where we landed on this.
Okay. Other comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I guess through the chair to Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, as chair of the policy committee. So the genesis of this was that we did not have a policy, that there questions arose, and I believe it was Dr. Jones went to look, to see what the policy was, so that she could figure out what to do with the situation, and there was not a policy. So the policy committee was asked to move ahead to create a policy.
Yes.
That is, so I guess my question is, because based on one of the comments and an email that we received today regarding the fact that some policies in other districts don't go into the classroom, it's more, it's not so much about the instructional aspect of it as it is, you know, political activities and that type of thing. And I know that the policies that we received did not have that language, but as you stated earlier, none of this was created from thin air. This was created from other policies, just not the policies that we were sent today, but other policies in the state of Connecticut and language that you received from Cape. So I guess my question would be, since there seem to be two types of policies out there, some that deal with instructional issues, some, like the ones that we received today, do not. Was there a specific decision to go in that direction, and if so, why? Just, you know, since, I mean, we could have gone with one that did not involve classrooms, so I guess it might be helpful to have a slight explanation as to why you went in that direction.
Thank you. When we first started with this, we rely on staff to provide us with a variety of models, and from that, we start to pick and choose. And I don't even recall at our first policy meeting if we had one as bare bones as what has been referenced. I don't think it was even one of our starting points. Everything that we had had was of a much more comprehensive nature, some of them far beyond what you're looking at in front of you, in fact. And so, honestly, that wasn't even one of the ones that we were looking at, some of the, as I said, the simpler ones, that leave in very vague terms what are then supposed to be implemented in the schools. And what we found when we were veering towards this type of, and it is more prescriptive language, was that ultimately, what we kept coming back to is, "This says what we mean." You know, "This is how we intend it to be rolled out." Whoever an administrator is, this is very clear and speaks for itself, which I think we as a committee thought was important, because there have been so many stories of varying things happening in classrooms, that something that is as widely open to interpretation as those more bare-bones policies are, this makes very clear, this is what we mean when we say a reference to political activities, or what is appropriate. And so, to answer your question, one, it started with, we never even start, one of the ones we were fed from, worked off of from staff, I don't recall it ever being of that general a nature. All of them were more to them than that. And then, as I said, what we kept coming back to, especially as we actually boiled it down, is, "This says what we mean." And this there should be, this should be very clear. I think this gives, I don't think this should impact the teacher in the classroom in any manner that's inappropriate, or that won't be what most professionals aren't already doing. And if there are some parents out there who misunderstand aspects of the policy, for example, that walkout, that was one of the first questions we got, that was not organized by teachers, first of all. And, you know, we had a discussion about that as well in policy, about all the ways that this covers, and that's why I made the point of pointing out that second-to-last paragraph of, "There are certain constitutionally protected rights, and nothing in here should be construed as to be depriving anyone of those." Probably a longer answer than what you were looking for.
Yeah, a bit, but, but I guess, so, just one other aspect, because you did bring up administrators. So have the administrative staff in central office and at schools offered any type of feedback? Do they think that this would be helpful or not, or have they not weighed in?
You mean beyond what has been, we've heard at these meetings?
Correct.
What, one of our explicit directives after one of our policy committee was to please, was to Ms. Deasy, with whom I work, with whom we work in policy committee, to bring this back to the central office staff to get the district-level feedback. We did not, the policy committee did not bring it out to the buildings. To any degree that central office communicated with building-level administrators, I can't speak to.
Let me weigh in on this question. When the question first came up, it more, not more, it directly related to campaign activities inside of a building.
And outside of a building.
And outside of the building. But it related to campaign activities. In this world today, it seems as though if one party complains about the other, then the other party has to complain about the first party, and so we heard complaints from both sides.
Yes.
And we had no policy to back it up, and I think 1311.2, which we will consider next, speaks mostly to that. However, 1311.1, under the second area, Individual Responsibility and Participating in Political Functions Focused on Campaign, I think also speaks to that and is valid. As Mrs. Maxine Cannelly knows, I've always been concerned about when you take the next step and get into the instructional side of life. And I'll, not right now, but I'll say that in the main, I think I could live with 1311.1, but the Political Materials and/or Engagement as Part of the Instructional Program, A through E, I would be more comfortable if that was not in there, and we did not try to set in policy language what is governed by constitutional language, and then have a parent say that 10,999 families who have kids in school agree with it, but one parent says, "Based on these seven words strung together, I'm making a claim." I think we are probably safer not getting into the free speech area of instructional activities by trying to restate what is allowed and what is not. That is, that is my concern. I can live with both, but that one has always been troubling to me. Other comments or questions from the board? Mrs. Pitkow.
So when this policy first came in front of the policy committee, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly had asked me to join the policy committee, and then I left in November, when Mr. Peterson and Mrs. Jacobson came on. And I think one of the reasons she asked, I'm not going to speak for her, is because I'm a teacher, she's a teacher, she's a Democrat, I'm a Republican, and many times when we were discussing this policy, we were talking about our professional lives and stories that we'd heard, but also, I played devil's advocate a lot, to try to make sure that we were being fair and just in what we were writing. And so, I understand your concern, but I also know the countless hours that we had these conversations for A through E, and that's why I feel they should be in there.
Other comments from board members on the policy 1311.1? Hearing none, I will put the motion on the table. If it has no second, then that answers where the board is, but I would like to at least have the board consider whether the Political Materials and/or Engagement as Part of the Instructional Program is something that they want to keep in this policy, if you don't mind.
Do you mind if I make a comment, just at all?
So I was about to make that amendment, but I will give the superintendent an opportunity to make a comment.
Well, I just want to be really clear, because I did not ask for 1311.1, and I don't want anybody in the audience to think that it was at my request that this policy was put forward. The issue that we had when I first came last year had to do with a winter concert, and I think everybody remembers that, where we were collecting petitions. I was getting calls from both sides, both parties, about what was happening on school ground, went to the policy. We didn't have a policy. The 1311.2, I think, really helps with something like that, and I would have been able to give a better answer. When we talked about this policy the first time in public, what I said was, "I would be happy to work on a guidance document." And I still feel that that would be more effective than this policy, which I think, what you're hearing from staff, they do have real concerns, because we will get one or two parents, and we will be in litigation, because my interpretation as a superintendent, their interpretation is different. And we have never in this district had guidance, as long as any of you have been on the board, or I guess as long as we've had board policy that we know of. We could do that, and I think it could be very effective in helping us go forward. So I just share that, because I, again, 1311.2, I think, was really where the issue was, where I needed guidance as superintendent. I'd had it in my previous two districts, it was not here. Thank you.
So, having said that, so, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Maxine Cannelly, and then if you'll allow me to put my motion on the table.
Well, I guess just through the chair to Mrs. Maxine Cannelly. I guess if this language was taken out, do you think that would be an issue? And, well, actually, no, I'm sorry, let me backtrack one second. I have two-part questions. First question is, this policy, 1311.1, was vetted legally, correct?
Yes.
And were there legal concerns?
There were no legal concerns. We, obviously, Attorney Deasy works with the policy committee. I then also separately sent it to the Cape attorney, who said there's, that this absolutely is fine legally.
Okay, and so that was my first part, just to follow up on Dr. Jones's comment. So, and then, I guess, second, preliminarily to Mr. Dwyer making his amendment, do you think that taking this language out would be problematic or not?
I don't know. One other bit of backstory that occurred to me, in terms of how this came up, this was in the language that the district brought to us. This actually, we were not initially charged or requested to make two separate policies, as Dr. Jones references. However, in the materials, all the materials that were brought to us when we first got started on this, was embedded all of this language regarding school employees. And so what we decided in policy, actually, was, "This doesn't belong as a single policy. We should separate it out for the sake, actually, of clarity, that we should have a separate one for employees and a separate one for school board property." But all the material given to us by staff included language such as this. So I will, first of all, admit, that seemed to be setting a direction to us, that this was something that was viewed as, and obviously, that was not the case, but when we were given back information, almost all of which included directives regarding staff, then we took that as, "This is part of our policy," separated it out, and then continued those to- those, those two discussions on two different fronts. To specifically answer the question about taking it out, I mean, the policy, we can do as we wish with it. We, you know, if the direction of the board, if they directed policy, we would like something to be of a more general nature, we would like it removed entirely. We can do that. As I said, this policy said what we thought, one, legally was the case, and then, two, what we thought would best serve the students, and three, set clear direction to staff, should there be any questions. But this is not something that is a, you know, a personal bell I'm ringing, so I think we're, we are fully prepared to, you know, make this manifest what the board wishes.
Okay, so let me put forth a motion to delete the section, "Political Materials and/or Engagement as Part of the Instructional Program," paragraphs A through E, but the following would remain. You have that? Is there a second? Mrs. Gerber, thank you very much for a second, I'll take that second as, so that the board can have discussion.
Right.
If I recall, one of the emails from CAAB, that it was, in my mind, clear that we have, most of our policies are really legally required, because we have to have a policy on X, Y, or Z topic, by the state of Connecticut, or by federal government. I think CAAB said that these kind of policies are optional policies, that, that they're not really required, but if the district wants to have a policy in this area, here is some suggested language. I think whenever that comes up, the staff are accustomed to giving our board a variety of policies, so that they can consider all of them. And I don't think our staff give direction as to saying, this one is the one we like and this one we don't. I think they just give you the policies and see where it goes. I do think it's, it just is an area that opens us up for conversation, because it allows somebody to take to task a teacher, or principal, or a superintendent, or this board, because the way they read five, or six, or seven words strung together, we've all been there, where this is not the context, this was not the intent of this policy, but suddenly, we're in court defending ourselves for having a pilot agreement on a math textbook, in mediation with our commissioner of education, because a group of parents picked a phrase out of state law and said, see, this state law says you can't pilot a textbook for 12 months, nine months. And we found ourselves struggling on that. So, I think we're just better off without these words in there, and allow the administration and the principals and headmasters of the schools to exercise judgment and discretion in supervising staff as to what's proper and what's not, based on the right to free speech and the constitutional right to, I'll say, teach without interference from somebody else. So, that's why I offer it, and invite conversation on it, and, and I'll say, like Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, I would rather have this not in here. And if it's in there, I'm likely to have to vote against 1311.1, but I'm not going to fall on my sword if seven of you say, no, I like the language. Mr. Peterson.
I would just say, from the standpoint of the policy committee, not to speak over Mrs. Cannelly, one of the things that we thought a lot about, and kept coming up time and again, was, in a lot of these cases, we wanted to create safe harbors for teachers. We wanted teachers to know that if they have political materials that they want to use as part of curriculum, they can do that, and create some kind of structure in which they could do that without kind of suffering commentary from, negative commentary from, from the public. And I, I also, another animating principle was to attempt to give the administration a lot of latitude in how they go about enforcing these, these policies. So, I, I mean, I just, there's been a lot of talk about how prescriptive this policy is. And again, one of our main principles was, we didn't want to do anything that was going to be onerous for the teachers. We wanted to create clear boundaries, and, you know, areas in which they could feel free to operate.
Other comments from board members? Mrs. Gerber, who seconded it, and then Mrs., Ms. Lieber.
Well, I guess, I guess one issue is that, obviously, at least from the teachers we've heard feedback from, they do view it as onerous, you know, and granted, we haven't heard from every single teacher in the district, so, but I'm just saying that, we haven't heard any teachers come up and say, yes, thank you, you're providing a safe harbor for me. We've only heard teachers say, we think this could be prescriptive and problematic, and so on. That said, this is something that this committee worked on for, how many months?
About nine at this point?
Right, it's been a lengthy process with multiple board members coming in and out at different times. So, and I remember, I guest starred at one policy meeting in between people, and at the time, it was an incredibly longer policy. I don't know if that was before or after you split it, I-
I believe the phrase you used was a mess.
Yeah, I know that too, but, but it was long, it was very, very long. And, and obviously, a lot of work has gone into it, both before and after that. But, the meetings are open to the public, the agendas are published, the work that you were doing all along, the edited versions of that policy were out there. So, there was plenty of opportunity for staff, administrators, teachers, and everyone else to weigh in on it, and, to the best of my knowledge, that we haven't, what we've heard at our meetings has been pretty much the only really negative, or has there been more? I mean, I know you, as policy chair, probably have gotten more feedback than the board as a whole has, so perhaps if you could-
The only feedback we've received has been reiterated here publicly in front of you, in terms of who is representing their views of this policy from the staff. I don't believe we've gotten an email from any staff member that you have not heard from publicly here.
Mrs. Lieber, and then followed by Ms. Pitko.
Just want to thank you guys again for all your time on this policy, and I agree with what Mr. Peterson, that B through D, pretty much, in my view, tell teachers what they are safely allowed to do within their classrooms. And the one question, and I apologize in advance, if this is a topic that's been discussed and is actually more controversial than I realize, but when talking about a balance of perspectives, I can't help but think of, like, the issue of evolution, and that discussion in science, and are we going to have a family who thinks they're creationists, and they think that this is not a balanced perspective, and now all of a sudden, you have an administration dealing with an issue like that? And maybe that's actually a nothing issue, but that sort of one thing that popped out, where is that, is, could that be viewed as a political, a political issue? Or is that handled somewhere else, and it's totally irrelevant?
We, we addressed that and said, no.
Okay.
So, let me just react to that, and then I'll go to Ms. Pitko. In my mind, based on my experience, there will always be somebody out there who agrees with your perspective, in that with these words, I think you ought to be able to teach X, and you're not. Ms. Pitko.
Now, I'm going to actually piggyback on what you both have said. One of the things that we talked about is sticking to the curriculum. If the state of Connecticut decides that the curriculum is teaching evolution, that's what you would teach. However, if you're a history teacher, and you are teaching a topic, that you would show both sides of the topic. And then, going back to, this has been going on for nine months, and this has been every word carefully dissected and thought out, to not be so prescriptive, but to not be so general, that to cut anything from here is almost a disservice to all the work, and yes, Mrs. Deasy was in the room for all of these meetings, to have this conversation. I think the point that the four or five of us, we really were trying to look at this from all political parties, in a teacher perspective and professionalism, and to keep everybody in mind when we wrote this, and not to write the pages and pages of policy that we'd gotten. And you can already see, there were more edits. So, I'm sorry, I can't vote in favor of, because I know what went into being in there, in that room, to look at this policy, to protect everyone.
I'll say, last comments on this amendment, unless somebody wishes to make a comment, a final comment. Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I, I guess one question, based on, I guess, through the chair to Dr. Jones, when, you know, we brought up possible problems, possible legal action, but not taking it to the extent of legal action, but simply problems. If problems arise, where teachers go to their administrator and say, this policy is hobbling me, and then Mrs. Maxon Cannelly made the comment that we can always go back and change it, but I guess the question would be, well, at what point would that decision arise? You know, would it be one incident? Would it be two incidents? Would it be five or 10? I, I just, at what point would you say, this, this is, this is too big a problem, I, I understand that you approve this with the best of intentions, but this policy is not working? You know, is there some kind of criteria you have in your mind by which you would say, this needs to be revisited?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if I can answer that, because it will, it will depend on who sends a question to me, or a concern. I know that these policy meetings that happen in the fall, there were some pretty contentious discussions during those policy meetings, and really, talking about, is this policy going to regulate some of the issues that we have, that we've seen, where somebody has made a complaint? And what I have said is, this policy, to my knowledge, the things that the board member or somebody has brought forward, this would not have changed one action. And I would say, in fact, where we have had decision-making, whether that's been at middle school or high school, I haven't had any at elementary, the board probably doesn't even know about them, because our administrators are doing what they're supposed to do, and when a complaint is brought forward, if they felt like somebody crossed the line, for whatever reason, it's the professional code of conduct, and they deal with that. So, I don't know if I answered the question, but-
And I guess just too, that, you know, the whole idea that this whole thing arose from, at least, in part, for the whole petition issue, are there constant complaints from parents about content being taught unequally, or, or with a bias? And again, I'm assuming we're just talking middle school and high school, because I wouldn't imagine that would happen much in elementary, I hope.
Well, I mean, certainly, the headmasters or principals maybe would have a different perspective than I, but they're pretty good to share things with me. And I can say that since I've been here, which is, you know, just over a year, I could probably count them almost on one hand. Seriously, I don't get complaints about this. That doesn't mean that you don't, when you're out in the public, but generally, because they don't like something a teacher said, doesn't necessarily mean that it was inappropriate either. Because if you're having discourse, you know, in a classroom, especially in history, the students are passionate, they emulate what their parents say at home. So, if you're having discussion in class, you are going to discuss both sides of the issue. And I think sometimes, you know, depending on what your view is, you don't want that to happen, but that is what's going to happen in a class, when, if it's part of the curriculum, and people are expressing their views, and we have really articulate young people, so.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, and then I'll take the last comment.
Yeah, I'll give an example. We, we heard of, and again, this was one person's perspective, I always offer that up, but we heard of a staff member crossing the line at our last town hall. And that, I'm not sure if you stayed for that part, because it was after the security, but at, at our town hall, of a teacher advancing his or her own view, which was in opposition to a child's view, and making the child feel uncomfortable. It does happen. And that's, I think, ultimately, that, I believe I went through six policy members, maybe it was seven, in making this, there were enough stories out there that this was real, this was not one person's axe to grind. And, so it's real, do I think it's in the minority? Absolutely, yes. I do have a proposal to make, and this is done on the fly right now, so, and it would address Mr. Dwyer's concerns. The one thing I would be curious about, because one thing policy committee is allowed to do, and I pulled up the bylaws, just so I would have the wording in front of me, our bylaws say that the policy committee, besides formulating and writing policies, is that we study and evaluate the administrative regs and reports, which concern the execution of the policies. One thing I would be willing to broach as a topic would be if this section were in the language of administrative regs. I think the one thing, having gone back in February, to look at this policy language again, after the input of staff, the three of us, at least, were definitely unanimous in, we want, we wanted this language, we believed it was appropriate. But where it is, and, you know, what kind of weight and heft came behind it, if pulling it out of policy and putting it in the regs, where then it would also be more flexible if wording arose that were an issue, I'm just throwing that out, I mean, this is now, the motion is the board's, you know, both the amendment and the, the main motion itself. I don't know if that's something that would alleviate anyone's concerns, that would certainly squarely put it on the administrators, administrators, but I say that with the caveat, this is the language we would want and expect to see. You know, if somebody wants to try to wordsmith us, okay, have at it, but-
Language like this, not-
Correct.
Right, yeah.
And so, I just put that out there as an idea, as something we have not talked about.
So, let me, I would be happy with that suggestion, and would adjust my motion, if you will, to delete it from here, but to ask the superintendent to incorporate these into administrative regulations. But, but before I do that, I'll, I'll say, Section E, a teacher shall not use professional interaction with students to further his or her own political aims. And then, the first bullet point after that is, the discussion and study of politics and political issues, when such discussion and study are appropriate, is not prohibited. I have no doubt that somebody's going to say, well, which sentence is the correct sentence? Because I'm relying my opinion on E, and somebody else will say, no, no, my opinion is on that first bullet point. So, I, I do think that, I'm just concerned that there will be different interpretations of this, depending on a person's orientation. But nonetheless, if, if the board thought moving these into administrative regulations as suggested by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly had some merit, I would offer to amend my motion, and if they didn't, then we'll just vote the motion down and move on. Mrs., did you, Mrs. Gerber, but you did raise your hand, right? Followed by Mrs. Vitale.
Okay, I just want to be clear, so, through the chair to Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, are you talking about taking what Mr. Dwyer wanted to remove from the policy, and make that an administrative reg, but leave this part and this part as a policy? Or you're talking about taking the entire policy and making it administrative?
No, just the section that was the language of the amendment.
The language of the amendment, okay, so the rest of it would remain as policy 1311.1?
Yes.
Yeah, that was my understanding as well.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Mrs. Vitale.
I do share- I share the chair's concerns, that I think that there is, you know, how you read it is subjective. And it's going to be subjective how different administrators maybe take a complaint. So, I think right now, I would be more comfortable with it being in the regs, and have staff do, have more conversations on how, how they're going to execute this policy, and, well, enforce this regulation, because I feel like that's the missing piece. I'm afraid that we pass this as a policy, and I'm not 100% confident, and Dr. Jones, please correct me if I'm wrong, that staff is going to be prepared to enforce it if a complaint should come in tomorrow.
Well, and, in response to that, one, the one thing that, and I, I don't mean to, if you were waiting for Dr. Jones to respond, I mean, the one theme that has, well, okay, we've probably had a few themes that have run throughout all six or seven policy board, policy committee members, but the one that had always came up to again and again, is that we trust the administrators to follow through with the intent of the policy, but know that there is a policy. So, that aspect of, I mean, this is, it is subjective, that's what, ultimately, what made us pull back from more prescriptive language, because we, you should have seen the gyrations we went through of trying to anticipate every possibility that could happen. We found ourselves in the realm of possibilities that were not happening, and we were creating a problem where there wasn't one. And ultimately, it, we did boil back to the language before you, but I will say that that idea of ultimately, we have to trust the administrators to follow through with the intent, it's what they're always supposed to be doing, we simply wanted this policy language behind them. But as I said, I, I again, put out there that idea of the administrative regs.
So, let me suggest if the board, it's the board's amendment, if the board will allow a withdrawal of the amendment, I would reintroduce it with the language- the language of indirect that the, this section formed the basis of a regulation to implement the policy. Will you accept by unanimous consent that I withdraw my original amendment? Seeing a yes, it is withdrawn, and let me reintroduce it to say that I move that we delete the section called "Political Materials and/or Engagement as Part of the Instructional Program," Sections A through E, and direct that it formed the basis of a regulation to be written by the superintendent. Do I have a second on that amendment? Mrs. Maxon-Kinley. I have no further comments to make. I think we've had discussion, but nonetheless, any other discussion that the board wishes to make? Ms. Leepa?
Just through the chair to Dr. Jones, do you, what are your thoughts on having this as an administrative reg and having to regulate it on the administrative side?
If the choice is as a regulation or policy, then I'd rather have regulation. The choice would be to have a guidance document that's neither of those, neither one of those.
I will say, in the seven years that I've been on the board, this board has tended toward, if you look at the 2004 policies versus the policies that have been adopted in the last seven years, they seem to have become more and more prescriptive, as the world has become feeling that we can't trust the administration to implement general policies, so we need to be more and more prescriptive. And I think that's not unique to our board, but it is just something that's happening in society. So policies have been more prescriptive than I would prefer, but they have been more prescriptive because that's what the board has wanted to vote on. If there are no further comments, can I go to the public for comment?
Sure.
So this is a comment on the amendment and the amendment only, even if you've come to speak on the policies in general, the two of you. Because this is an amendment that has not been known to you prior to coming, you're both welcome to step forward and comment, or you don't have to. And again, please state your name and address.
Frank Sahagian, 20 Chelsea Street. Let me just first say, my administrator did have my back on that, on that particular issue, so I just want that to be on the record. I think that's a terrific compromise, is where I'd put it. And I think it's much more appropriate in regulation than it is as policy. So I thank you for offering that.
Thank Mrs. Maxon-Kinley. Anybody else wish to come forward and state their name and address on this amendment?
Bob Smaller, again, the president of the FEA, and I too would say that I think that's a wonderful compromise. I think this kind of activity, the part that's in the classroom certainly belongs in the hands of administration. And we always try to find that right balance, staff, in making sure we don't cross the line. Teachers are very careful to make sure that, you know, we aren't injecting our own opinions. What made me very uncomfortable about having it in policy is, I think it opened us up to interpretation by other people, where they could be coming at us and ending up with a lot of energy being spent defending things when it should be spent on student instruction. So I think by having an administrative policy would give Dr. Jones the ability to adjust as real-time issues came up, and hopefully, we would get to a better place down the road. So I fully support this amendment.
And of course, it was a basis of administrative regulation. We don't have administrative policies. We have board policies and administrative regulations. Anybody else wish to come forward to speak on the amendment and the amendment only? Seeing nobody coming forward, back to the board. Any final comments on the amendment? Mrs. Maxon-Kinley?
Just the final comment, that I feel the need to say, I do stand by the language in its entirety. I think it was well thought out. I think it was well considered. I think it was based on experience, and I think it was based in good policy. And I stand even by letter E. That said, I'm happy with this compromise, and so I look forward to moving on to the next policy.
And my final comment is to thank you for the, for the solution that you offered. There are no further comments than, Mrs. Gerber, do you want to read the amendment?
Sure. It's to delete political materials and/or engagement as part of the instructional program, paragraphs A through E, and direct that it form the basis of an administrative regulation.
All understand the motion in front of you. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with eight people here. Thank you very much. Now on to the main motion, which is, any further debate among the board on the main motion as amended? Okay, I will state it and then go to the public to see if anybody wishes to make a motion, make a comment who has not spoken before on the motion that says, "The Board of Education approved policy 1311.1 as amended, community relations, political activities of school employees." Anybody wish to come forward from the public to make a comment on 1311.1 as amended? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. It's unanimous with seven. Thank you very much. On to number two.
Eight. Eight, eight oh.
I'm sorry, 1311.2, right?
Yes.
Yeah. That's, I was going by the point two. Mrs. Maxon-Kinley.
Did we make the motion?
Make the motion.
Okay, that's true. Thank you. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve policy 1311.2, community relations, political activities in the schools, on school board property. Mrs. Maxon-Kinley, followed by Mrs. Pitko II. Mrs. Maxon-Kinley.
The only changes here was trying to make the format more consistent. Other than that, the content is the same. I think this is ready for a vote.
Mrs. Pitko, any comments since you seconded it? If not, any comments from the board on this second policy? Having none, out to the public, if there's any member of the public wishes to comment on 1311.2, political activities in the schools slash on school board property. Please come forward, state your name and address. Seeing none, back to the board. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve policy 1311.2, community relations, political activities in the schools slash on school board property. All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with eight votes. Thank you very much. And thank you, Mrs. Maxon-Kinley, for your dedicated work on this subject. Next policy, the recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve policy 5144.1, students' use of physical force. Mrs. Maxon-Kinley, seconded by Mrs. Gerber. Mrs. Maxon-Kinley, do you have a comment?
No, I've received no questions on this. I assume it's pretty straightforward based on our previous discussion, so I have nothing else to add.
Mrs. Gerber, do you have any things? Here's a second. Any other comments from board members? No comments? Back to the public. Any public comment on policy 5144, students' use of physical force? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready for a vote? I think you all understand the motion. All in favor of the motion to approve 5144.1, please raise your hand. It's unanimous, eight oh. Thank you very much. New business approval of UI Energy Opportunity Program. Is that... That's Mr. Morbeto and Mr. Cullen, if you'd come forward, state your name and...
There's no recommended motion.
Oh, good Lord. Didn't put a recommended motion.
Good evening, everybody. Sal Morbeto, manager.
Can you, one moment?
Sure.
Yeah, let's see. It says approval, but just to cover our bases, I think Mrs. Gerber is correct. I'll entertain a motion to add an item to the agenda to approve the adoption of this program. Mrs. Gerber makes this motion? Mrs. Vitale? It takes six votes to add a action item to the item as opposed to approval. So the motion is in front of us. Any questions on the motion?
I'm only wondering, why is this not, why is it on for an immediate vote? As opposed to discussion, vote next meeting? I'm not opposed to it, I'm just wondering why it did, why we're not.
We've done these so often, my guess is the staff just felt that this is nothing new, so let's just put it on the table. But Mr. Cullen, do we have a time, time constraint?
It's also, it's also tight for the UI because they would, they're running out of money in this fund for this year.
So there's a time constraint?
Yep. We want to get on board.
So let me, now that it's, there's a motion to add an item to the agenda, any questions on that motion? If not, all in favor of adding an action item to the agenda, please vote seven oh. One person stepped out. Thank you very much. So I'm going to state this, Mr. Cullen, and see if it doesn't pass muster with whoever you have to file this with, with the state. That the Board of Education approve...
The UI Energy.
The UI Energy Opportunity Program proposed for McKinley Elementary School. Does that sound like it'll pass muster with whoever you have to send it to?
Perfect.
Okay, you have that? So I mark that as a motion. Mrs. Gerber has seconded it. So now we have the official motion in front of us. Make your presentation as quick as possible.
Absolutely. I know you have a lot to do. This is the Energy Opportunities Program through the UI. It's funded by the surcharges on everybody's electric bill. This is a conservation measure. The opportunity is that they give us incentives and rebates on items that we install that conserve energy. Along with your packet, you had the proposal by the LED lighting group that would basically change out every fixture or bulb in McKinley, both interior and exterior, that would create a great savings. That savings pays for the work that needs to be done. It creates an immediate cost savings on our utility bills. It is financed at 0% interest for a term of 36 months. The payback for the energy, the energy savings would pay back for the cost of the work within 2.3 years. And that's the short of the whole story.
Mr. Cullen, do you have any comments that you also wish to make?
No.
Any questions from the board on, how many UI Energy Conservation Proposals have we advanced?
Since, we've done eight schools recently. Over 10 years, 11 years ago, we did all buildings except one in one major sweep, and then we've been doing them since 2012. We've done eight programs.
Okay, so been there, done that is accurate for this project. Questions from the board, Mrs. Gerber and...
Well, that was, part of my question was, because I know I remember seeing these proposals before. And I guess the, my second question is, do you have any sense of the kind of savings that you've realized in the projects that have been approved so far?
You mean, the aggregate of the ones that we've already done? I don't have that with me. I can answer questions about this one.
Yeah, we thought you were going to ask about McKinley's. We have that prepared.
Sure, okay, well.
But all of them combined, we'd have to probably do a spreadsheet like we did with the solar.
Well, I mean, I don't need a specific number, but just to get a sense of how...
Typically, the, it's a mixed bag on the size of the projects because all projects aren't the same size.
Well, and McKinley's one of our largest elementary schools.
Right. This one would be saving on, on average, $848 a month on our expected electric bill. That's while we're paying back. Once we are done paying back, we're saving $3,600 a month on electric.
Okay. I think Mrs. Gerber asked a good question because from time to time, when I present at other town bodies, I won't mention which one, we were asked, so what have we done to make this district more efficient? And saying that we have dropped the per pupil expenditure from like 20th in the state to 90th in the state is too generic an answer for some people. And it might be interesting to know that over the years, instead of hitting a home run for, "What did you save for me lately?", what have we done year after year after year to continue to save money to invest in student education and not in utility bills? So it might be helpful to me, if it doesn't take a lot of research, to say, over the course of time, what have we, what have we saved? I think Mrs. Gerber has a good question.
Yeah, we have a good spreadsheet for the solar photovoltaic systems, but we could do one for these UI Energy.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, no, I just think that would be helpful to have.
Yep.
Other questions from the board on this project? Out to the public, the motion is to approve the UI Energy Opportunity Program for McKinley Elementary School. Any questions from the public? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, back to the board. Are we ready for a vote? If so, all in favor of approving the UI Energy Opportunity Program for McKinley Elementary School, please raise your hand. If you're in favor, it is unanimous with...
Thank you.
Eight people here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Discussion and possible action on facilities, planning, and research. My apologies if we talked longer on other issues of importance to us for those members of the public who have stayed behind. We did ask, I did ask, that if anybody wishes to add an item to this agenda for the board to discuss, that I would put it on the agenda. I did get some suggestions, but they came a day or two after the agenda was sent out. And there's no restriction. If you have an idea that you'd like this board to talk about, I'll put it on the next agenda, so that we can make sure that any board member who has an issue that's important to them, that they can do so. Let me talk, let's talk about these five issues, and I want to reserve enough time at the end so that at least the topic can be put in front of us. But clearly, if some of you don't think well on your feet at 10:22 and you want to send me an email, just make sure you send me an email before the agenda goes out for the next meeting. So having said that, items I through five, do we have any comments that people wish to make on I, closing elementary school? Two items, scenario A or B. Mrs. Gerber, followed by Mrs. Maxon-Kinley.
Yeah, I, I think this is one topic that we really should put to bed for the time being. I just think that while it's kind of come up ever since the whole structural change discussion came up, I just don't see how we can go down that road. And I think also looking at the past history of our district, when we closed schools and our operating budget continued to rise every year. Our enrollment was going down. We closed four elementary schools, and yet every year, operating budget increased by fairly large increments. I mean, granted, it was a smaller budget at the time in the 1980s, but nonetheless, those enormous savings that you would hope to see by closing not one, but four elementary schools were not realized. And the amount of disruption that it caused, and then the costs that eventually were borne by having to reopen the schools and by portables to put on other schools because we had sold two of our schools away. I just, I understand why it sounds attractive to some, but looking at the numbers, looking at where our schools are, and looking at our history, I don't see how closing an elementary school is going to solve any problems, and I think it would just open a whole new set of problems. So I personally would like to not have that discussion. And with the understanding that obviously, if our enrollment goes completely down the tubes and one school has 100 children in it or something like that, yes, perhaps, we would have to revisit it. So it's not as if I'm saying we will never, ever close an elementary school in the town of Fairfield. But looking at our enrollment projections, looking at the, our facilities, where they stand right now, I don't feel that to have this discussion and to have two school communities be in limbo indefinitely is really helpful.
Mrs. Maxon-Kinley?
I was only going to, because part of what we heard in public comment was understanding kind of the direction, and I didn't know, Mr. Dwyer, if you would want to do a quick recap of why we're discussing these and what kind of timeline we are looking at. I mean, I could reference them myself, but, I mean, would you say it's correct that in terms of the impetus of our having this discussion, we had started an ad hoc committee? We have been pressed by other town bodies to look at structural change. We've talked ourselves here. I mean, we deal with structural change every year. This is not a new topic for us. But that is, we build the buildings to the millions and millions of dollars that we are, that this examination is in many ways long overdue of, are we doing things the right way? Are these things ideas that we should consider? We had the ad hoc committee start this fall, where ideas surfaced to be considered. That committee then was disbanded, and so it came to the full board to have this discussion. And so that is that impetus, that this is a, quite frankly, a long overdue conversation to examine alternatives. And in terms of a timeline, however, we're not under any definitive timeline. This will be a conversation that it takes until we feel that we can draw conclusions. This will be a conversation that it takes until we feel that we can draw conclusions. You know, we're not... Unlike the program we just passed, you know, made a motion for and passed, we're not under a timeline deadline, aside from the idea that with Mill Hill, of course, at some point we're going to... If the building committee comes back with issues regarding the 504, we might have to consider that discussion, which this would be the basis for that. I may have just completely more confused the public. That's why I initially put that out there for Mr. Dwyer, but he didn't immediately sit right forward to the mic.
Well, that's because you kept talking, so I didn't want to interrupt you.
I paused.
I pause in between sentences all the time and get interrupted, and that's all it was, is a pause. So I have a habit of waiting. We are under no time obligation. I think we're under a time obligation to say, is this something of immediate concern that we have to talk about now? And if not, I agree with Mrs. Gerber, then say, we're putting it to bed for the moment. We can't forecast the future. And in enrollment projections, every Board of Education knows, the first five years when we know the kids are born, the projections are pretty good. But in years six through 10, they start getting more and more fuzzy. They're professional projections. They're good projections. They're the only projections we can go on. We can't go on a projection because some town interest group says, well, my projection is this. They're not professionals in this field. We rely on a very reputable firm, Malone and McMoon, to make those projections. And they have actually given us a high projection, a low projection, and a middle projection. And they said, based on Fairfield being a relatively stable community and other factors, we think you should plan on the middle projection. But Mrs. Gerber is correct. If it suddenly did hit the low projection, maybe five years from now, this district will have to look at it. My guess is... No, not my guess is... So I moved to Rye, New York, and like some of you out there said, I bought this house so my kid could walk to the school. And what are you talking about, closing it? And Milton School was one block away, literally out my backyard, across a small parking lot, through a little bit of woods, and there's the front door. And they're talking about closing the school. Parents spoke up. The district did not. My kids went through that school in a one-section class. Six classes of kids, K through 5. One section, one section alone. And there's no economic reason to keep a school open that has six classes in it. Before my kids graduated from this high school, they had portables on that site. And before they graduated from college, they had a full-blown addition to replace the portables and build the space that you need for the specialized instruction. I don't think that we plan buildings just for the 10-year projection we have. I think as a board, we plan buildings for the 20-, 30-, 40-year life cycle that that building will be in. So I've actually looked at, so what if we did what a certain member of the Board of Finance suggested that we would do is close a school instead of renovate it? It takes three, almost four, schools for us to absorb that school because you can't pocket redistrict and say, I'm going to take all the fourth graders from that district and send them to this school because that's where I have room for fourth graders. And then the first graders, I'm going to send to another school. They may live across the street from one another, but I'm going to send them to the next available seat. As a district, we don't do that. We don't think that's good for our neighborhood development. It's good for the quality of life, we believe, in Fairfield. So at the moment, and based on the accepted enrollment projection, I don't see that we can close it unless we're ready to do something else. Change the nature of our neighborhood school system and send people to different schools depending on where the seat is available. Or start having higher class sizes so that you could accommodate people within a section. We have looked at those guidelines for redistricting and/or for opening or closing a school, and this board has consistently... Not this board, but a Board of Education with different members on it have consistently adopted guidelines that our consultants say, if that's what you believe in as educational quality, you really can't close an elementary school. But you've asked us to look at how you could physically do it, and we'll show you how you could physically do it. But whether you do it or not is up to the Board of Education, based on educational values. I'll only say with this, that it says discussion and possible action. I think one of two things will happen tonight, one of three things. We have discussion. Nobody wants to pursue this. That's the last time that this item is on an agenda because it doesn't have to be voted up or down. That people say, I think we ought to continue to talk about another item. And then at the end of the night, we'll say, let's have a motion to move these agenda items to the next agenda. And then third, if there's any discussion here that says, no, let's actually vote to say yes to something right now, then we will do so. So having other comments from board members on the first item, closing elementary school? Mr. Peterson?
I'll try to be brief because it's going to piggyback on a lot of other comments that have been made already. I think that one of the problems that this district has gotten itself into over the years is getting rid of facilities that we could use now. If we're talking about Mill Hill and perhaps closing that theoretically, it might be possible if we had Oldfield, but we don't. You know, if we're talking about closing Jennings, it might be possible to chain people through to Grassmere, but we don't have that either. I think when you talk about how the town has in the past created schools with, you know, 40-year lifespans, we're over that for a lot of our facilities. But I think previous incarnations of this board have been very careful to put schools in places where they're needed, where the people are. And I have not seen anything in the projections. I haven't seen a super compelling financial case that what we need to do is get rid of the facilities that we have. I think that we may be able to use them better. It may be, you know, a larger redistricting. There are several issues that we need to discuss, but simply shoving schools down is not something that I'm interested in at this point. I think there'd be a very high bar for me to consider that.
Now, just for clarification purposes, so the board is very clear, the town owns our buildings. They belong to the town. They build them, they finance them, and then they turn them over to us for educational use. If we stop using a building for educational use, it goes back to the town. In this instance, what is now Ludlow High School, for a number of years was used by this town for community institutions. And so we have to use it for an educational purpose if, quote, "we" want to keep it. That doesn't mean the town doesn't say, as they did with Ludlow and they did with Osborne, keep it for other good uses, and when we need it again for educational, we'll have it. I think that's always a better option.
Unless I'm mistaken, the town was considering selling Ludlow at one point.
Well, they didn't, but yes, I'm sure that... Just because somebody thought of it doesn't mean that some wiser people didn't say that was probably going to be a mistake. Other comments that people wish to make? Mrs. Vitale?
I also really have no desire to pursue looking at closing either one of Jennings or Dwight. I know those were the two schools that have been discussed. And Mill Hill. We need school space, especially in the southern end of the town and the western end of the town. I agree with Mr. Peterson. If we had Oldfield right now, we would not be as worried about, well, Mill Hill and Sherman right now. We are seeing a hole where that school is. And that neighborhood that used to be Oldfield is now split through multiple elementary schools, probably three if I'm going to guess. Yeah. So I think that for years, I've been following, you know, the Board of Ed and other town bodies, and it seemed like we were on... We had a plan, and that plan was to get rid of portables, to keep neighborhood schools, to do renovations, to meet that end. And I appreciate that last year, there was a lot of financial instability and a lot of questions, and we didn't know what was going to happen with the state. I think that things have calmed down, and some of the talking points that were brought up last spring by members of the public and members of other town boards, that we should close two elementary schools within a couple of years, took on a life of their own. And I... It's caused a lot of, you know...
Angst.
Angst for a number of school communities. And I think that at this point, I would like to put a stop to it for now. I mean, if the situation changes, the situation changes. I think closing either one of those elementary schools, even if it is feasible, is going to create disruption, and we're going to see class sizes increase at the schools that those children will be redistricted, which I don't think anybody wants.
It appears as though the majority of the board has voiced their opinion. So if there is no other opinions to the opposite, I'll declare that this is a topic that has been vetted, discussed, and for good and just reasons, is not something we're acting on right now. And we'll move on to item number two, relocate WFC, which is the Walter Fitzgerald campus. Any comments from board members on that? Mrs. Maxon Connolly?
I would only say that not knowing more, I would not want this item removed because if this is something that is feasible, comes with some savings, perhaps involves even a improved setting, I don't know enough to remove this from the list.
I know this. The building is not in good shape. It is not the same quality of school facility that we offer to the rest of our student population. And that my personal opinion is that we move this up on the agenda of, we ought to get this done, not just put it on something that is talked about year after year after year. Mrs. Jacobson, followed by Mrs. Maxon Connolly? And by Mrs. Leep.
Sorry, did you have a follow-up, Jen? If I could follow up on Mr. Dwyer's comment?
Please do.
Only that I, having visited the Walter Fitzgerald campus, I want to say that I think our comments, especially about its physical state, especially apply to the exterior. I think what the staff have done inside have made it a very welcome... I mean, from the sign outside to coming in, they have done a wonderful job of cleaning the school up from what I understand it was many years ago and making it... I mean, it's a very clear educational environment for the learning. The classrooms were... They were regular classrooms, and I thought the staff did a wonderful job of making that an excellent educational environment. It's what's beyond that, which I completely agree with Mr. Dwyer about, that the building itself is not in the best state.
Thank you for clarifying that. And not in the best location.
It's a little tight.
No, no. It's... We've hidden that building out from sight.
We didn't hide it.
Well, the place we chose. It ought to be out in, you know, where everybody can see it because those students are valuable to us, as every other student is. Mrs. Jacobson, followed by Mr. Peterson?
No, I agree with the comments so far that I think it's a good idea to look at this item going forward. I would...
Go ahead, please.
I would just like to ask that when it does move forward, that we could have the administrator from Walter Fitzgerald with us to possibly speak to this issue for us, as well as any possible relocation such as Ward, so we can have just a better understanding of how that process would all work and unfold going forward. But in the meantime, yes, I'd be interested in keeping this going on forward as an idea.
Ms. Leeper, I went out of order. My apologies. Ms. Leeper?
Forgiven. Just also want to go on the record as not supporting closing an elementary school at this time, but also while we're in the midst of this enrollment dip, as we've seen in the projections, I would be curious to see if there's a scenario in which we can find room to bring Walter Fitzgerald sort of back in-house, if you will, because we have a little flexibility for these five years. And that way... And then buy us a little more time to find a more permanent, possibly more pleasant house for Walter Fitzgerald.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments on, yeah, Walter Fitzgerald campus? When we finish all five items, I'll take one motion to move the following items to another agenda. On to number three, grade... Consider grade reconfiguration. Any comments on that topic? Mrs. Gerber?
Well, it says scenario D and F. And scenario F said it's not feasible. So I wasn't sure why that was still on because that appears to be the only non-feasible one that's on this list. So...
That language comes from Malone and McMoon. I think if we say... One thing that I learned a while ago is there's an educational theory behind almost anything you want to do in public school education. There is some school district somewhere or a number of school districts who are using that and finding it very successful. And whether you have a grade reconfiguration of K2 in a building that is designed for K2, and then another one for 3.5 that is designed for 3.5, many school districts use that successfully. They just tested two scenarios. I think the topic really is, are we willing to consider the concept of grade reconfiguration of a K2 versus a 3.5 as a better use of our facilities? Is the only response that I would give.
Okay.
I wouldn't be tied to the...
Right. It just said two items. So I just thought, you know, because it very clearly states that there's not enough room at the middle school level to be able to accommodate 5 through 8.
Well, and that was because that scenario included moving five to the middle school. And I think grade reconfiguration is more K2, 3.5, keeping them in the elementary school, that fifth grade in the elementary schools. Other comments from board members? Mr. Peterson?
A few things. My gut tells me that I'm not in favor of the grade configuration, but one of the things that I realize about this is that there's probably an educational component that I would like to be briefed on by the administration, get an actual opinion on this, if it's, you know, if it is feasible, if there's an educational potential negative component or positive. I'm concerned about it from the issue that we would only be doing this at McKinley and Jennings and not having this program be all the way across town. That's one of my objections. But again, you know, if... I think that this could be driven a lot more by educational considerations and input from administration. But I also wanted to give some voice to... I had a great meeting with the Jennings PTA not that long ago, and this was obviously a top concern of theirs. We spoke about it for some time. The tone of that room was that they were not in favor of it. One of the things that I heard that I thought was actually a very good point and touched me personally because I went to Jennings for one year after I got consolidated out of Osborne Hill. They were concerned... One of the concerns that they raised was that families would be broken up, families with younger children would be broken up geographically at a time that like in the rest of the town, you have everyone in the same building, you know, kindergarten or third grader, fifth grader. I had a... My younger brother was in first grade while I was in sixth grade, and I got to see him, and that was, you know, helped kind of keep that together. So just to communicate that thought that I got from the Jennings parents.
I don't know who went first, but Ms. Pitko, followed by Mrs. Jacobson?
My understanding from the consultants was that this option was actually only a short-term fix to our racial imbalance problem and that it actually wasn't going to solve the problem over the long term. I don't really know, then, the point of dividing up Jennings and McKinley if we're trying to stick to the neighborhood school mentality.
My only response would, again, not be dissimilar to my comment to Mrs. Gerber's comment. They were asked to say, what are some solutions to racial imbalance? This was a solution that they came up with, not with a recommendation, but because if you paired Jennings and McKinley together, K2, 3.5, the racial imbalance issue would go away overnight. Not overnight, but when you implemented it. They were not asked, what would this look like district-wide? And what are the educational values of a K2 versus a 3.5? What are the pluses? What are the minuses? They didn't get into any of that. And I honestly think that this is a question that we ought to ask the board. Shall we look at it from a positive and a negative, explore it and whatnot? Or is there enough feeling on the part of the board it's not worth continued discussion? I, for one, think it's worth at least another meeting, but that's because I'm willing to explore a variety of ideas, if for no other reason to be able to say to people in this community, we left no stone unturned. We talked about a variety of ideas, and here's what we came up with. Any other comments from... Yes, Mrs. Jacobson? Sorry.
I also, in my gut, feel like I am not going to be in favor of this because I feel like this is basically a racial imbalance supplemental program in order to solve an issue by using these two... issue by using these two schools to do it. On the other hand, I also feel like it would be worth going forward with it, if only to allow more of those two communities and to be able to come and speak against it, or how they feel about it, or how it would impact their children and their families, so that we can have a better understanding. So if only for that reason, because I just feel like there's been one person here who spoke to this. So I would definitely like to hear from more of them, actually. Thank you.
Ms. Vitale, followed by Mrs. Maxine Connolly.
I also think it's worth exploring, even not if we don't just single out those two schools, but just as a concept in and of itself, the educational impact and any rough potential cost savings.
Mrs. Maxine Connolly.
Very similar to Mr. Vitale's comment. I don't know if I'm in favor of it or not because I haven't seen it in a bigger picture. I've seen it as a topic. As Mr. Dwyer said, you know, this came with no recommendations. It simply was another viable solution. We can't say no to everything because the first reaction is, well, it's different. You know, that's kind of, if that were the case, we wouldn't be broaching any of these topics, that it's worth seeing what the financial impact is of it. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it. I don't know anything about this, except what the Malona McBroom report had. So between the money, the educational impact, I will remind people that one of the reasons that this was thought, I believe, viable with Jennings is that they are down to a situation of having multiple grades of only two sections, which we have said is not something that we consider to be the best way of servicing the education of our children. There is an educational impact there. I'm not saying I'm in favor of this, but I think it's worth at least finding out more information so that we can be more definitive about saying why we would say no to it.
Based on comments, I get the impression that we'll add this to the list of things that we'll give further discussion on. Yes, Ms. Leeper or?
You can go first.
Who's first? Mrs. Gerber.
Well, just to say, I do think, as a couple of other board members have said, that it would be really helpful to have a little more detail as to what this would look like.
Correct.
And I do have an issue with singling out just McKinley and Jennings. I just think that that is problematic to me. I'd like to get a sense of, would it be possible? And just very simple mathematics, I could see it being problematic because we have an odd number of elementary schools. So you start pairing people up, there's going to be an odd man out somewhere. So, and I don't know how that would work, and then that would kind of create a redistricting on top of the splitting K through two, three through five. But I don't know. Maybe there is some other way to do it. I don't do this for a living in terms of coming up with plans like this. So I think it might be helpful to, not necessarily let's discuss it again, but could we get some more detail as to what this would look like? Really, truly, like, understand the ramifications of it, both as far as a district decision or just looking at the two schools. How would that work? And what would the implications be? Because we can just keep putting it on agendas and saying, well, we don't know, we need more information, but at some point, we're going to have to get more information. So it would be helpful at some point to get that information.
Correct. I don't, when I think of putting it back on the agenda, it's to consider grade reconfiguration, period. Not with scenario D or F. I think those are, they're just examples. And I think that Mr. Peterson's correct that the first thing that we ought to do is ask our superintendent to comment about the educational value or lack of value of this situation. I'm sure there are districts out there that swear by this configuration. You know, they just love it. They can't imagine doing anything else. And I'm sure there are districts out there that, when I voted to move the sixth grade from the elementary school to the middle school in Rye, New York, I had good friends of mine throw the proposal in my face because I was going to ruin their child. They felt that strongly about it. And that's what happens in educational debate, you know, it's beauty of the eye beholder. So yes, I think that's the proper place to start with, consider grade reconfiguration, and that's the educational value of it. Mrs. Leeper, Ms. Leeper.
I was going to say pretty much exactly what Ms. Gerber said, but sort of also stepping back to Chair Dr. Jones, I'd also like your feedback on these ideas as, you know, having the big-picture vision of our district and also where our district is headed, and the instructional legitimacy of these ideas, and whether or not they'd be enhancing educational quality, or just sort of your thoughts on all of these. Because you're the expert, and I can very much imagine town bodies saying, well, the board dismissed XYZ idea and didn't even ask the superintendent what she thinks. Is this educationally appropriate for our community?
Okay, so it'll be on a future agenda. I'm looking at the time. Let me just get through these last two items, and we'll look at the clock and decide whether we're going to do the rest of the agenda another day, or whether we're going to extend the meeting. Relocate central office as part of grade reconfiguration.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and extend the meeting to 11:30.
Second, is there a second for that? Mrs. Vitale, any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Myself, and Ms. Pitco, and Mrs. Maxine Connolly. So it passes five to? I think I mistakenly raised my hand. We need six votes to extend the meeting, and on principle, I raised my hand, but clearly the board wants to finish some items, so I will vote yes. So that makes it six to two, if you don't mind my rewriting history. The motion passes six to two, the meeting is extended to 11:30. Central office.
On central office, it would actually probably cost us more trying to move central office, our central IT section, and our rent is very cheap here. Mr. Cullen, right around $70,000?
I don't know.
Sorry, okay. You might be looking at utilities and the rent, because we were looking at this today. But it's very inexpensive for the building that we have.
Yeah, it's actually not a leased agreement. It's a Rooster River condominium agreement, so it was a purchase. And we just negotiated, the town helped us with this, a 10-year extension that started July 1, 2016. It'll expire June 30, 2026. The common charges we're paying for fiscal year 1819 will be $92,836. Utilities are running about $68,000. So, and it's about 21,000 square feet here. It's very inexpensive.
Oftentimes, people look at this space and say, why is the school district spending so much money on this kind of space? I don't know who negotiated it, but it was a very good deal.
Yes, it was.
Mrs. Jacobson.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of moving central office at this point without some compelling reason. I feel like central office is such a busy place. There's people coming and going all of the time. Putting that inside one of our school buildings would be a concern to me from a safety perspective, just given all of the different people that come to central office for different reasons. And we're trying to create a culture of safety around our schools right now, and just that coming and going and all of that, of who know, at different times of day, at night, we have meetings there, here. So for me, just from a, just a plain safety and security perspective, in addition to the points that you just made, I would like to take this off the list.
Any other comments from board members? Seeing none, we'll be moving this off for discussion by some future board at some future time. Consolidate to one high school. Mrs. Maxine Connolly?
Please don't move it forward.
Mrs. Gerber?
Ditto.
Same.
Yeah, there's no real scenario that this would actually practically work. There's just not enough seats in both high schools to, either high school to, or even in the high school and the middle school campus and disrupting the whole middle school process. This is an issue that people have strong opinions on, especially those who remember that they supported one high school. But we've made that choice, and so now we're moving forward. So absent other comments from the board, Mrs. Jacobson first, Ms. Leeper second?
I wasn't going to make a comment about this. I was going to ask if I could make a motion to add the discussion of the redistrict, the pocket redistricting, to tonight's agenda, since we had so many community members come out.
Wait a second. Let me get done with this one.
Sure.
Did you have a comment on one high school?
No, sorry.
Okay. So therefore, at the moment, we only have two items, relocate Walter Fitzgerald campus and consider grade reconfiguration to be moved forward. So again, I'll wait until we finish our discussion in general. You wanted to make a comment about new ideas that you had.
Not the long list that I sent you the day after the agenda came out, which maybe you can just forward along for next agenda for me. But I was going to make a motion to add the discussion of the pocket redistricting that Malone McBroom had put as one of the scenarios that's not included on tonight's agenda, and make a motion to add it to tonight's agenda for us to discuss it.
You want to add it so we can reject it? Because at the moment, it's rejected.
Yes, but we have a lot of community out tonight. I don't think it's going to add a lot of time to our meeting to quickly add it, so then we can say.
So put it in the form of a, and realize, pocket redistricting is not the same as a comprehensive redistricting.
Correct.
Two different issues.
Correct.
So you're not commenting about comprehensive redistricting.
Nope.
But pocket redistricting is really taking a street or two and saying, let's just add those two streets to another district, just because there are kids there.
Yes.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
First, a motion to add to the agenda an action item around pocket redistricting.
I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda, an item to the agenda regarding pocket redistricting.
Okay. Ms. Pitco seconds it. It needs six votes for passage.
I'm not clear on what the motion is.
Just to add it to, add it to the agenda.
Why don't you say scenario? Because it. Is that what the one it is?
I don't know whether they consider scenario C, pocket redistricting, as we define that term. They did.
Yeah, they did. So it was on, one of their scenarios, which wasn't included.
Okay, so your motion would be to add a discussion of scenario C to the agenda.
Correct.
Mrs. Maxine Connolly, have you listened to that?
I have, however, based on your definition, that's not a pocket redistricting. I just want to be clear about what our future discussion items are. If we're talking about 97 to 100 people, that's not a pocket.
It really isn't. The way we define pocket redistricting, the way she has, I'm sorry, the way Ms. Leeper has.
Malona McBroom did.
That is their term. It's not the term that we commonly use.
Keep in mind, we changed the definition of functional capacity, too.
Can I finish my sentence? She has changed the motion to say, to add a discussion of scenario C to the agenda, which is the scenario that Malone and McBroom advanced. She didn't, you didn't put the word pocket redistricting there, just scenario C.
Scenario C.
Just as a way for us to say, we're not interested in, I don't think it's necessary, but the motion is there, it's seconded, to add a discussion of scenario C, as presented by Malone McBroom, to the agenda for action. Any, does the board understand the motion that's?
I'm sorry, you said something totally different than what she said, and I'm trying to keep a record of this.
Please restate your motion.
She said, add an item to the agenda regarding Malone and McBroom's scenario C.
Period.
That's what she said.
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
And that's the second.
Yes.
Any further comment on the motion?
I just, it seems like there's community members who didn't maybe know that that was already a rejected scenario. Oh, no, I don't have, you asked for comments.
I think I forgot.
The vote.
The vote.
Correct.
Add an item to the agenda.
Can we vote?
So we need six votes to add it to the agenda. All in favor of adding it to the agenda, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I'll make it eight. It's added to the agenda, now make your argument.
I think I've already said it, but there are community members that seem to not know that was already not viewed as a viable scenario, and it was already rejected. But I hate to think that we have a lot of community members who are feeling a lot of angst and anxiety that their children could possibly be redistricted when they are walkers. So I just wanted to voice that I'm not, even though it was already rejected, I also am not interested in pursuing that scenario.
Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I agree. I don't think that a pocket redistricting, especially a pocket redistricting, or a redistricting of 100 students who are primarily walkers to an elementary school makes sense on a number of, but I just want to make it clear, was this rejected? I don't recall it being rejected. I mean, I'm fine with it being rejected, but I don't recall us having the discussion of it being rejected. So I just, I just want to make sure we're clear on that.
Okay. It was my understanding that this board accepted the memo that Dr. Jones put forward that says, these are the five items that are worthy of at least some discussion. If it's not on the list of five items, it was rejected. Not because we took a vote on the entire Malone and McBroom report, but because it's not worth continuing to explore. That's the only rationale.
Okay, I just wanted to make that clear, because I think there is some confusion about that, whereas when I started hearing concerns from parents about this, I thought, well, we were not really considering it. But it's not as if there was a formal rejection of it, per se. It was just not on this list. And I think it not being on the list then led people to be concerned, well, if it's not on the list, are they still considering it? I guess the one thing I will say, though, is the fact that at some point, there may have to be a redistricting. And so I just think it's important for people to remember that. And while I certainly would never advocate for redistricting walkers, because I think that that's counterintuitive to trying to save money, at the same time, it is important for people to understand that we may at some point, either through adding on to schools or enrollment going down, or schools not being utilized properly, there may have to be some redistricting. And it might be a very extensive redistricting in which every school is impacted to try to move people around. It's not just going to be students from one school going to another to fill a space, just like, we don't think this is a good idea, at the same time, it wouldn't be a good idea to do it with two other schools. So I just think it's important for people to realize, while you don't have to live in a state of constant fear that there will be redistricting, because we love to talk about it in Fairfield, but we don't do it as often as we talk about it, but at some point, it may have to happen. And so I just think it's important to recognize that. And, you know, my children are redistricted, and it was on the middle school level, so it's different than elementary, and I understand the whole community school aspect of it. But it's just important to remember that this may be revisited at some point. Not pocket redistricting, not small numbers of children, but it could be large numbers of children. So it's just important for parents to understand that.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree with you, that this might be a particular scenario that we've said isn't worth continuing to explore, but the idea of district-wide redistricting might have to be considered in the future, or currently, is, I think, a valid statement. Mrs. Vitale.
I agree with Mr. Gerber. It doesn't work. I mean. I just couldn't take it away. I mean, I think that we've talked about redistricting for years in this district, and part of the reason why it never really went anywhere, because it was always the sentiment that we're moving the problem. Now, as we have more space and enrollment is declining, and utilization is not equivalent among the schools, I think it needs to be a discussion that we have as a community, not even, just for the, what is best for the education of our children. And having adequate space and classrooms that are not overcrowded, because you could have the smallest school with two sections and be maxed out for your class size, and try to just kind of create an equilibrium among all the schools, will be a discussion for the future. You know, this was put on the list just to relieve the overcrowding at Sherman. That's still a problem, and that's still going to have to be something that we're probably going to have to address in the coming years.
Okay, I guess we do have further compensation.
No, just a brief comment. I don't know, through the chairs of Dr. Jones, if you know, how did, obviously, it was to address Sherman overcrowding, how were these streets picked?
Malone McBroom, actually, because they've done so much work for us. They looked at the grade levels, where children are, where are, you know, how could you move X amount of students and actually free up space?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, that, looking at what kids by age live on what streets, is, has to be done in any redistricting, that is something that has to be done by a consultant, because members of this board don't know where everybody lives, nor should we. So it does require an outside consultant to kind of just look and test various models to. to see if they can get the right combination of kids in the right schools. Mrs. Jacobson.
Two points. One is, I thank you for the motion, and I am happy to support getting this off the list. And I presume that the same mentality that was just mentioned about scenario C, if it wasn't on the original agenda, it's been rejected, would also stand for scenario E, which is the pocket redistricting at McKinley. Same, same, it's not on the list, so therefore, it's off.
That one wasn't feasible. That one wasn't feasible.
What?
I, that is my approach to life.
Right, I'm just assuming. Okay, all right, I'm just...
That is my approach to life.
Just so we're clear.
Mrs. Leeper disagreed with that approach for scenario C. I would hope that we're not going to go through the Malone and McBroom report and say, let's reject A, then put a motion to reject B, then et cetera, et cetera. Unless we've moved an item forward.
Okay.
It's no longer on the table.
Okay, good. So see an ear off.
We still have a motion in front of us, so we have to act on this one.
Okay, all right.
So we only had a motion in front of us to add the item. Can I suggest for the board's consideration that we actually make a motion that says the Board of Education agrees to remove item I, close an elementary school, item four, relocate central office, item five, consolidate to one high school, and scenario C from the Malone and McBroom report from further consideration? Did I, did I say something that made sense?
It's probably easier just to do what you are moving forward. It's only the two items, right?
Well...
But now we can say that we took it off. So just do that. Bye.
Did I say something that made sense?
Board of Ed agrees to remove items one, four, five, and scenario C from Malone and McBroom from future consideration.
Is there a second? Ms. Pitco. Any further discussion on that motion? You generally like to word motions in a positive manner, not a negative manner, so therefore, that's why I did it that way. With no further discussion, any...
I'm sorry, just a technicality, we didn't, you didn't need to add an item to the agenda because we said possible action, so the possible action covers that?
Yeah, I think possible, that's what my intention was, to say possible action on these items.
Okay.
We did have to add the scenario C by motion because of...
Oh, I understand, but we don't need to add another agenda item.
Not the other ones, I don't believe so.
Because it said possible action.
Right.
Okay.
It's 11:07, but I do have to go out to the public to ask if any member of the public wishes to comment on this, because we take votes on any motions we put out. Any member of the public wishes to come forward and talk on the motion that's in front of us? Please state your name and address.
Rena Paris, 461 Morehouse Highway.
It's so late, I almost don't remember my name. It's Liz Delavolpe, 98 Garden Drive. We're both Jennings' parents.
Just wanted to say hey, and that we were here, and there is a lot of concern in our community, so we appreciate you wanting to hear about that.
Specifically also, I was taking a couple notes when some of you were speaking about three, scenario three, consider the grade reconfiguration. And Ms. Pitco, I also remember looking at that report and seeing that, I don't think it was a long-term solution for racial imbalance, so, to further investigating that. And Mrs. Vitale, you were mentioning equity across schools, so I think that needs to be considered, too, over just singling out two schools. And Mrs. Gerber, you had also said, looking beyond just Jennings and McKinley, which also makes good sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to come forward?
Hi, Megan Dockham again. Just wanted to say thank you all for clarifying for me. Appreciate it.
Sarah Nuland again, and I just want to say thank you. It's so interesting to watch your process, but that was really, really... But no, really, honestly, thank you so much for considering the impact on families, and to know that there will be comprehensive redistricting, I believe, is forward-thinking, and to know that it's not going to be stopgap measures, but that you're thinking truly, planning, and it's leadership from the Board of Education, which is truly what's kind of needed. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Our board meetings have been described with a lot of adjectives. Interesting isn't necessarily the first one that some people come up with. So thank you. So at the moment, I will add to the two items that remain under discussion, relocate Walter Fitzgerald campus and consider grade reconfiguration to future meetings. And I will take the suggestions that Ms., Ms., did we not vote? Oh, that's right, too, we took public comment. Any further comment from the board? Thank you. All in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. It's unanimous with eight votes. Thank you. There's a good reason why we shouldn't meet past 11:00. That I will add the list of items that Ms. Leeper gave to me by email, and if anybody else emails me something, they're welcome to do so. Ms. Pitco, you want to make a comment on that topic?
Well, the last time we talked about this, I asked us to add possibly relocating the ECC, and you wrote it down and said it was going to be on this agenda. Like, I saw you write it. Pretty sure I could go back.
Okay.
That's why I didn't email you, because you said it was going to be on here.
Scenario is Walter Fitzgerald.
So, how about doing me a favor? Email me, because, just because I write, might have written a note, doesn't necessarily mean it stays in my head. So please do send me an email. I'll send myself an email that, a question that seems to always come up is, what is the capacity of our elementary schools? And I think this deserves some discussion among the board. So that is a topic that I will also add. If there's anybody else that has a topic, please send me an email so that we can get it on to the list. And copy Dr. Jones so that we don't lose anybody. With no further discussion, on to the approval of minutes.
Can I make a motion to combine all four sets of minutes to one motion?
Okay. How about this? The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of January 23, 2018, the regular meeting of January 25, 2018, and the special meeting of February 8, 2018, and the regular meeting of February 13, 2018. All four motions are in the form of one, all four meetings are in the form of one motion. Ms. Pitco.
I was going to...
Second it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Mrs. Gerber made the motion, you seconded it. I'll ask it this way, does any board member feel that there needs to be a change, actually, to any of the minutes? Having heard none, then we will address this as a motion for all four minutes. If there's no further conversation, all in favor say aye. This motion is approved, eight to zero. Thank you very much. Will the board consider that in the future, we'll write the recommended motions just to include all minutes, rather than one by one by one?
Don't we have to vote on the actual minutes now? We just voted on the motion to combine...
No. Motions are not motions until they're put on the table, first and second, and the chair has said it's on the table. So therefore, by interrupting me before we put it on the table, that was a good interruption because it allowed me to rewrite the motion. So superintendent's report.
I'll just mention two quick things. First of all, on the walkout last Wednesday, just very, very proud of our students. Mr. Cummings was actually at Ward, I was at Ludlow for the entire event. Want to thank police, who really worked to mobilize additional people at both campuses, make sure that media was kept at bay and out on the street where they belonged. Just, it made us feel very safe. But in general, almost all of our board reps were actually ones who were working very hard in both of their high schools, and they just did a, did a great job. And I think, I think it was Ted that mentioned tonight about the song Imagine. That is how the whole thing kind of felt, if you love that song. But it was just, they did a good job. And then we had the Vision of a Graduate on Saturday, had a good turnout for that. It was high energy. Felt like we really got great input in really looking at, which you'll see, again, when we come to the board at the end of the year with the graduation requirement. So we were really pleased that we had a good turnout, and good turnout from parents who had seventh graders, who will be impacted the most.
Any questions for the superintendent on her report? Mrs. Gerber.
Well, this wasn't specifically on the report, but it is just a very quick, hopefully easy-to-answer question. I know that an email went out to high school parents of juniors who were supposed to be taking the in-school SAT on Wednesday, and I almost don't even want to say that...
Oh, no.
Anyway, but apparently, the email stated that if there is a delay or a cancellation, the SAT will be rescheduled, I believe, to April, a date in April. But there was no mention of early dismissal. So if there's an early dismissal, would they still be able to have the exam?
No.
So no matter what happens, if there's no school, if there's an early dismissal, because it didn't say early dismissal, so parents are confused as to...
Yeah, we discussed it, and if we have, if we could change where, I believe it's 90, like 90 minutes, there's a minute requirement, which for us, when we talked about it with our high school schedules, the way it impacts buses and lunch, we just, we can't change our, the time that we normally would have if, if we have a delayed arrival. So the state does not allow us to test. Is that what you're asking?
No, no, early dismissal.
Oh, early dismissal. I'm sorry, I was doing it the reverse.
So, because that wasn't explicitly stated in the email. So it said, if there's a delayed opening, there won't be SAT.
Right.
If there's a cancellation, there won't be SAT. But it didn't say if there's an early dismissal. So my question is, if there is an early dismissal, would they still be able to give the exam or not? Because there's some confusion there.
Yeah, if it was an early dismissal, where we knew before school started that it was an early dismissal, we would not give the exam. Highly unlikely, because all of your students who have accommodations, you would be asking those students to stay at school and take an, take an exam that you don't have time to give them, especially if they have double time. So...
So no matter what happens, any weather-related delay in any way, shape, or form, there will not be an SAT on Wednesday?
Right. We reached out to the state because we were most concerned about a delayed opening. And that's what we think would be most likely to happen, but they will not allow it.
Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent on her report? Hearing none, on to committee liaison reports. Ms. Pitco.
So I'm going to start with SEPTA. This Wednesday, the 21st, from 7:30 to 9:00 at the Fairfield-Ludlow High School Lecture Room, there's a special presentation, What Parents and Kids Need to Decrease Anxiety in Our Fast-Paced, Rapidly-Changing World, presented by SEPTA. It's Fairfield Teacher and Parent Jim, I'm going to mess up his last name. Thank you. On the 28th, Wednesday, the 28th, is the March Monthly Meeting from 7:30 to 9:00 at the Fairfield-Ludlow High School Library. It's covered or not covered, in-network, out-of-network, every plan's different, and knowing what's available to you and how to access services is a constant challenge. And the founders of the Medical and Healthcare Insurance Consulting will be there to talk to parents. Friday, March 30th, is the SEPTA Teen Social Group, from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m. And then I went to the Board of Health meeting. It was a very, very short meeting. I don't think there's anything to report for the Board of Ed, though.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Pitco? Other liaison reports from people? Go ahead, Mr....
I'll just say very quickly, for the sake of the record, that the Board of Finance's annual budget comment open forum for Fairfield residents coming on the budget is going to be held on Saturday, the 24th, at 9:30 in the morning at Ludlow High School Auditorium.
I will say that the reception and the questioning that we got at the Board of Finance, despite comments that say, please don't take it, read anything into this, I did. And I think we are going to have to especially be an advocate for our budget before the Board of Finance on Saturday, and when the agenda, when the item comes up for a public hearing on the 3rd, and, no, for a vote on the 3rd, and, because I just don't get a positive vibe. Other comments that people wish to make? I'll make a comment on behalf of Mr. Asa. I happened to actually go to the last Holland Hill Building Committee meeting. Based on their discussion, it appears as though they're, quote, "on time, on budget." That doesn't mean they don't have to continue to push forward, to stay on time, but their initial bids have given them at least some comfort. But no guarantees, because the mechanical is bid, which is an important number, and some other line items are bid, but they still have a few more to go. Any other comments on committee liaison reports? Seeing none, open board comment? Mrs. Maxon, Cannel.
Hopefully, somebody will eventually watch this, but to report to the board, I'm very excited to say it was an exciting weekend up at the Odyssey of the Mine State Competition. Just a quick shout-out to Ms. Pitco, who was a volunteer represented for one of the teams on campus, but we had some wonderful, first of all, a record number of Fairfield teams, record number of schools participating. I, we're one short of having the majority of our elementary schools involved. Ann Tomlinson, a couple of our, of these competition highlights. Burr and McKinley both had third-place finishes, which puts them in the delightful position of they got recognized in front of hundreds of people, got to come up on stage for the medals, but those coaches are not obligated to do all the fundraising to go to Worlds. So that's a win in some ways. And we had a team from Stratfield finish in first place in one of their categories. The North Stratfield team finished in second place out of, I think it was 21 teams, in one of their categories. It was a year for growth and just an exciting weekend. And I'm very excited for those Odyssey of the Mine teams and for those elementary schools to build on that. Also very excited, I think we had at least four primary teams. Those are the grades K through 2, who are just the cutest things ever up there, because they are brilliant, and they are funny, and they are artistes, and they believe very highly in themselves, and it's a wonderful point to build on. So very exciting for that.
Other open board comment? Ms. Leeper, followed by Ms. Pitco.
Just sort of also for the record that Ms. Vitale and Mr. Asa and I have been appointed to the newly-formed Finance Committee, and will be meeting the end of this week to set our schedule and hopefully get to work.
So I guess I don't have to make that comment now. Any other comments that people wish to make? The meeting is set for March 23rd. Let me follow up on, the meeting is set for March 23rd as the organizational meeting at 2:00 o'clock, and then that committee will decide who their leadership is and what the official meeting time will be going forward. Ms. Pitco.
Very excited, I just signed up to be a Mill River Lab guide.
The only open board comment, I'll, my second comment would be, the self-evaluation meeting is scheduled for the second meeting in April. That is usually a meeting that is held in executive session, because we deal with the interpersonal working relationships of ourselves as a board and the superintendent. So the 10 of us meet for that purpose. If you have a topic that you think is important for us to cover, please send me an email. If that topic is one that is required to talk in public session, then we'll talk about it in public session and then go into executive session. Because remember that we can talk in executive session, because it's interpersonal relationship discussion, but if we're talking about an item that is not qualified for executive session, then that would have to be discussed in public. So in the past, we have not had two different topics, but in the event that somebody has an idea, please send it to me. Mrs. Gerber.
Two questions on the self-evaluation. First, are we going to have an outside facilitator come?
That has been our habit. I think only once we didn't.
Right, so we will?
Yes, that's my intention.
And then also, especially because we do have a number of new board members, will there be, I know in the past, when I, when we first got on the board, we received information in advance, you know, the, kind of the CAE standard thing, just to kind of frame the discussion, and, you know, especially, I think, again, with new board members, you know, it might be helpful just to kind of give some parameters so that we can make the most, best use of our time, once we are actually in our meeting.
Okay. I'll have to look back in that, seven years ago, because I remember something like that, some document, but it doesn't jump forward to me at the moment. So please, if you have any thoughts, please send me an email about that, with no further open board comment, public comment, for those who remain behind and that wish to make a comment on agenda items.
Will we talk about anything, even if we were already up there?
Not, you can talk about any other item, other than the one that you came up for already, as long as it's on the agenda.
It's the same topic.
Yeah, then, thank you.
Right, I can email.
Yes, please do. You always have that as an option. You always have that as an option. With no further business, a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Leeper. All in favor, please raise your hand.